All right, well, I’m going to go ahead and call the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, June 16, 2020, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor, it will be me calling the roll today. So we’ll start with Mayor Karen Moran.
It will be a bit dirty.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Macho.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin. Councilmember Gamblin is having some audio issues right now, but I can confirm he is on the line. Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
I’m here, thank you.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
And Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
It does look like we have a quorum. Jason, it looks like you have the ability to put your camera on, and because the mayor has requested that, I’m going to ask again if you can turn your camera on, please. Meeting accessibility.
Share my webcam. Hang on just a second.
Pursuant to the Governor’s Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To be live, you would be doing that on the city’s website at samamish.us/tb21, city’s Facebook page, which is City of Samamish, Washington, Comcast Channel 21. You do it later on the city’s website or on our YouTube channel, and via Comcast 21 within Samamish only. Councilmember Train, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag—
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands—
For which it stands.
One nation—
One nation.
Under God, indivisible—
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
—and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Councilmember Train. We do have an executive session. First thing, and that is to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1G and litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1I. I imagine this will be a one-hour executive session, then we will return for public comment. Councilmembers, you may need to log out and go to the other meeting rooms.
Okay, so I’m going to fill back in. We are returning back from executive session and computer issues. And hopefully, while we are doing this, our callers that were told to call back will be doing so. And in the meantime, we will hear from our emergency management, Andrew Stevens.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. Thank you again for providing me the opportunity to discuss the current state of emergency management here in Samamish. Across the globe, coronavirus numbers continue to rise. Since my last report two weeks ago, the world has seen an increase of roughly 1.75 million cases and 60,000 more fatalities. So please allow me to put that into context. The world has been dealing with COVID-19 since January, and it took till mid-April to hit 1.75 million cases globally. We just hit that number in the past two weeks again. That is nearly a one-fifth increase in total cases in the past two weeks alone. In the past two weeks, the U.S. has seen an additional 320,000 cases and 10,000 additional deaths. As states continue to lift state home orders and other COVID-19 mitigations, surges in new infections are again on the rise. Locally, King County has requested that we move into Phase Two of the Washington Safe Start Plan, loosening restrictions on nonessential businesses, retail establishments, and limited social gatherings. If these restrictions are lifted and individuals choose to participate in these various activities in unsafe manners, ignoring public health recommendations on facial coverings or social distancing, then we too can expect to see an increase in infected individuals in our city as well. I want to make it extremely clear to everyone listening, nothing has changed as far as COVID is concerned. There is no vaccine, and there is no effective treatment. The risks posed are still very much a reality, with the only advantage we have now is better knowledge of how the disease spreads and a far greater availability of protective mitigations like PPE. You cannot gaslight your way out of a pandemic as pretending as if no threat exists. Understanding that people need to return to work and businesses need to reopen their doors or risk closing them forever, it is in all of our responsibility to ensure that they can do so safely. If you can physically wear a face covering while in public, you need to continue to do so. If you can socialize or conduct meetings remotely, then continue to do that as well. Knowing that the threat is still there, we need to do everything to minimize our own risk and the risk to others. I think it is important to recognize that while some businesses are resuming operations, those employees are there to earn a living and not to place themselves at unnecessary risk from whom they serve. Past several weeks have brought additional challenges to communities across the nation outside of COVID, as protests against systematic racism, inequality, and instances of police brutality were organizing in nearly every community. While the vast majority of these incidents have been conducted peacefully, some have resulted in civil unrest or violence. On June 4, a peaceful protest of roughly 500 individuals took place here in Samamish, beginning at the Samamish Commons, then transitioning into a march northward, looping back down through 228th. I would like to express my personal appreciation to the Samamish PD for the time and effort they spent preparing for this event, and all the work done to ensure that those attending the peaceful protest were able to do so in a safe environment. In addition to the fantastic work of our police department, nearly every city department, and numerous external stakeholders assisted in the preparation and coordinated management of this event. Now, while this year has certainly been challenging, it has highlighted many successes, and I’m proud of the way Samamish has approached each of these incidents. Since 2017, Samamish has implemented an all-hazard emergency management program focusing on strengthening inter-agency’s coordination, equity in assistance, and whole community disaster resiliency. This has provided us with the confidence and the ability to respond effectively to any range of disaster or emergency, from severe weather and floods to pandemics and civil unrest. Civilous Samamish and its residents continue to lead the way in preparing for, mitigating against, responding to, and recovering from whatever seems to come our way, and we’re only halfway through the year. So, thank you. I’d be happy to address any questions you may have.
Council, do we have any questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, thank you for that report. I got a couple of questions from the community, and I was wondering, what is our policy for first responders wearing masks? So, for those who are vulnerable out in the community, if they do need help from a first responder, I think they’re a little bit worried if they show up without masks. Do we have a policy there, or do we know what their policies are?
I know E for Eastside Fire has a very robust policy when it comes to personal protective equipment, not only for protection of individuals but also themselves. So, anytime they’re out in public or interacting, whether it’s even going to a store or getting gas, but especially on calls, they will wear PPE. They also have a reconnaissance program where they will send maybe one firefighter or medic to first interact with the individual, the resident seeking need, do a quick determination if it may be, whether it’s a trauma, or maybe this is a COVID-related symptom, and then they take further precautions for everyone to fully suit up in gowns, protective, you know, face coverings, and additional PPE to ensure that they’re not exposed as well.
Oh, that’s great. What about our police department? Are they doing the same?
I will have to check on that. I know that the police department has been provided PPE, both on the city side as well as through donations from service-based organizations, and I’m sure King County has provided them with PPE as well.
Is that, I mean, I don’t know if we need to get formal council direction, but I think it would be great, since I did get a few questions, if we could find out what their policy is and make sure that when they’re out in public, that they’re being as careful as our firefighters are. That would be awesome.
So, I can’t speak to the policy, but during that protest march last week, I believe it was, I did notice that the, all of the officers were wearing masks at that point. So, but I can’t speak to the policy, but I did notice they were all wearing masks.
Okay, I’m not seeing any other questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can’t hear you, Karen.
So, based on our executive session, I’d like to make a motion to have the city attorney enter into negotiations with the interim city manager, Mr. Rudat, to retain him as our full-time city manager.
I’ll second that.
Okay, and we don’t have any, but, okay. So, Mr. Gamblin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, so, Mr. Rudat has already gone through quite an extensive interview process with the city, actually several times. He was initially interviewed in July of 2018, re-interviewed for the interim city manager position in October of 19. At that point, there was a full background check done before hiring Mr. Rudat as the interim manager. He has glowing referrals that are received from all the past interim manager positions that he’s done. I’m not going to go over them now, but quite striking how many of them coming from other cities, speaking to his good abilities and character. We just desperately need a high-quality city manager now with the crisis that we’re currently in with COVID. And I would just suggest that we go ahead and instruct the city attorney to see if she could come up with an agreement that would work with for Mr. Rudat. He’s highly experienced, highly regarded city manager, and again, I think we desperately need this person in this position right now. So, I’m wondering if there’s a chance that Mr. Rudat and the city attorney could come to a meeting of the minds this evening so that it could be, the terms could be ratified by the end of the meeting tonight, possibly in the second executive session. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. And we do not have anybody here to print it across our screen. So, we’re going to do a real, so we are going to do a real call or do a discussion. There’s people in the queue, hold on. I found my notes. Oh, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. These have certainly been trying times, and I appreciate Depp’s efforts for our community and for the staff. And I, but I also strongly believe in transparency in government, and unfortunately, this process isn’t being transparent. I only learned about all of this earlier today. His current contract doesn’t even actually expire. It’s for six months, and then it goes month-to-month thereafter. So, I’m not sure that we’re in a hurry to make this all happen in one day. The public, unfortunately, hasn’t had a chance to meet the interim city manager because of the lockdown. And while some of the council members have reported that they’ve spoken with staff, typically, we would have some sort of a process by which staff could provide anonymous feedback so people could speak freely. Again, I’m not suggesting that there would be anything bad that we would find. It’s just that processes like these exist for a reason, particularly in government. And I really believe that we need to have that level of transparency here, and there is no reason to hurry this along. So, for those reasons, I cannot support this motion tonight. I think we should follow the process and give the public an opportunity to weigh in. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yeah, I won’t waste anybody’s time. I agree with what Councilmember Stewart said. This is not a comment on interim city manager Rudat’s skills or accomplishments, which we’ve had the chance to review and email today. I think that should be published. I think that’s something the public should see, and we should delay this vote until we’ve had the chance to let the public speak about it, too. So, that’s why I oppose the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Sorry, I don’t need to comment. Thanks.
Okay, well, I am going to comment. I followed the, exactly what’s been done in the past. And I want to say that I’ve heard nothing but wonderful things from the people that I talked to that were on staff, and I feel like we have done exactly what’s been done in the past. So, the only reason that it made it easy to move through tonight is because we were using a contract that’s been familiarized and used in the past with very few changes. We’re very lucky. So, it made it very easy to be able to do this and quickly move through tonight. And it’s unfortunate we can’t have, but to delay by a week or two weeks or three weeks, we’re still not going to have City Hall open for the public to come in and meet them. So, that is still going to be on something that isn’t going to work. And I’m still going to go back to what I had said earlier, that as soon as we can have City Hall open, we will have an open house so that everybody can come and meet them then. And, you know, that would be the biggest, the best plan that we could do. It’s unfortunate that we can’t do it now, but it is what it is. And I think that’s it. Does anybody else have a comment? Okay, seeing none, I’m going to call for the vote. I’m going to go, I’m going to call everybody out. Councilmember Train?
Are we not doing the online voting?
Pardon? There isn’t.
I’m sorry, are we not doing the online voting?
No, she’s not here tonight. Councilmember Train?
Madam Mayor, why don’t you just do a roll called “Vote Using Hands” to say aye or nay, because we can see everybody, so that might be easier and faster.
Okay, it was asked by a council member in the past that we do a roll, but we can do hands if you’d rather. Okay, so, let’s do the hand call thing. So, can everybody see everybody? Okay, y’all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay, five-two. Okay, next we have got “Public Comment.” Public comment pursuant to the Governor’s Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@mandersen@samamish.us and citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Up to three minutes of verbal comment, public comment, may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. The phone number is 1-571-317-3122. Access code 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say “unmuted” when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. This evening, we also have got a hearing. So, if you have called in and you are wishing for your comment to be for the hearing, would you please let the gentleman know who’s going to tell you to speak, and he will probably put you back on hold so that you can speak for the hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see we have four people who, excuse me, we have five people who have called in to provide public comment this evening. I will unmute the callers in the order in which they join the meeting. As the mayor mentioned, when it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say “unmuted,” and then you’ll have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record, and I will now go ahead and unmute our first caller. Okay, first caller, you have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Martin Nyslick. I’m a Bellevue resident. I reside at 312 West Side, Samamish Parkway, and I am on the Board of Washington Sensible Shorelines Association, also known as WASA. We and the Samamish Homeowners Group approach you tonight to enlist the city’s support to help stop repeated flooding and damage to our properties and to the lake environment. Since flood prevention is on the agenda tonight, we are returning to reemphasize requests that we submitted to you in March following February’s storms. Let me provide you some historic facts. The Corps of Engineers designed and built the flood control system in the Samamish River in 1965. The county agreed to inspect and maintain it annually. Sixteen years ago, a study determined that average lake water levels had been raised by more than a foot. No one thought to ask why. Twelve years ago, the flood control system was declared deficient by the Corps of Engineers. No one was told about this. Subsequently, a group of lake residents found that annual maintenance was not being carried out by King County. Under pressure from us, they resumed some annual maintenance. Five years ago, a county consultant report noted that vegetation and sediment in the floodway still block lake outflow. Recently, we’ve been told that flow from the lake is blocked by increased flow allowed in from Bear Creek. And if those flows were combined, downtown Redmond might be flooded. As important, you need to know that high-water flooding events on the lake are now happening on an average of every four to five years, each producing major property damage and lake and shoreline environmental damage. Lake Samamish has, in effect, been turned into a detention pond, and we’re now facing unknown and possibly significant changes to floodplain regulations. We need your help with these issues. If you are not aware, Samamish residents are assessed more than $1.5 million each year by King County for flood protection. Thus, we’re asking for your assistance to press the county for solutions to these problems. Mr. Brockway from the Samamish Homeowners Group will address more specifically how you can help. Our comments will be provided in separate correspondence. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Okay, let’s move to our second caller. I will go ahead and unmute you now. Second caller, you have three minutes.
Hello, I’m Reed Brockway, as Marty mentioned. I am a Samamish resident, and I’m calling to comment on the timing of executive sessions. Just kidding, actually. Hope that was perceived as a joke. I’m currently the acting president of Samamish Homeowners or Show, and I’m also working on the Lake Samamish flooding issue with Marty, who just spoke to you. As he mentioned, at the end of March, we submitted an appeal to the Samamish City Council, and in fact, to the other three cities around the lake, for the city to become involved in measures to address flood control that are currently under consideration by King County and its Willamore Project. I signed that appeal on behalf of Show and Marty on behalf of WASA, but to date, neither of us has received a response. That may be due in part to the fact that the appeal lacked specificity as to what actions we were asking for. So, earlier today, we submitted an elaboration of our three requests, and in brief, those are to provide a streamlined permitting process for repair of damage caused by the extreme high water that happened in February, to support our effort to get the county to do a serious evaluation of the effectiveness of a dynamic weir at the transition zone in Marymore Park, and to support us in pressing the County Flood Control District and the Corps of Engineers to do a regional plan with the goal of restoring the Samamish River flood control system to Corps of Engineers standards. Our written supplemental gives more detail on each of these points. I’d just like to add a little more about a dynamic weir. These days, during heavy rainfall periods, the combination of the flows from Bear Creek Basin and the Samamish Basin actually exceeds the capacity of the Samamish River. In these cases, backwatering from Bear Creek restricts the flow from the lake, and the lake goes too high. There are really only three things that can be done about this. One is to dredge the river to restore its capacity. Another is to create a large storage basin for Bear Creek to reduce its contribution during heavy rainfall periods. Or, the third is to lower the lake in advance of these high rainfall periods to increase its storage capacity without it going excessively high. Now, the first two are clearly impractical, at least in the near term, and then they, in fact, may face insurmountable hurdles like cost, land acquisition, fishery regulations, and like that. The third, however, is quite workable. Create a gated dynamic weir. We ask the city to get behind us and support that. What happened in February could then be prevented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let’s move on to our next caller. Caller number three, you have three minutes.
All right, I did include some slides. I don’t know whether they’re going to be visible for you tonight, but I did send in the presentation. My name is Eric Johnson. I live in Inglewood Hill area of Samamish. This area is experiencing multiple infill developments of upscale, single-family homes. Almost all of these remaining parcels are in critical areas, including erosion, hazardous, or sensitive water body. I’m concerned about the city’s lack of oversight after a building permit was issued on a parcel near us. The first slide should show you some of the things. The approved plans for this parcel included a silt fence and clearing limit barrier. The developer was supposed to stay within the clearing limits, as shown by the red line, but he did not implement this plan. Instead, the green slashes show what the developer actually cleared after expanding the silt fence and the clearing limit barrier. On the second slide, this illustrates the initial location of the clearing limit and the expansion of the clearing limit. The vegetation was supposed to be retained in the condition for permit approval in the critical area to prevent slow erosion. There was no oversight for the city during the clearing activity. After we contacted the city about the developer expanding the clearing limit fence, the city required the developer to contact, contract, an arborist to review the damage, and a surveyor to correctly cite the silt fence and clearing limit barrier. The orange stakes highlighted by arrows now show the correct positioning of the clearing limits, much inside the current expanded barrier. This process failed to prevent habitat damage by the developer and violated the SMC. Mitigation is now required. The city was also not following the SMC in issuing SANS, Sensitive Area Notice on Title, for this property as required by the code. After being questioned about this, the city is now going to issue a SANS. These types of failures to follow the SMC are also happening on other lots in critical areas being blocked. We expect better oversight, especially in these critical areas, to adhere to approved plans and the SMC. We ask that the council look into and to address these problems with increased oversight of development in critical areas. In summary, the city is not monitoring development and clearing in critical areas. Mitigation after damage is not acceptable. Is it the citizen’s job to monitor development compliance to plan and code? SANS are not being filed, and the title is required by SMC automatically. And developers are failing to follow the plans they submitted. This is a contract they’re not maintaining. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to caller number four. I will unmute you right now. Caller number four, you have three minutes.
Honorable City Council, this is Mary Victor, and I live in Samamish. I first want to start with public comment on public comment. There are directions to call before 6:30, and there’s an agenda estimated time, but that’s been very elastic lately, and it’s quite indeterminate when people will know that they can give public comment. that they can give public comment, including holding for more than an hour. In fact, tonight, we would have had to hold more than two hours if we weren't saved by technology, because when you went to your executive session for go-to meeting, Mike Sugg, who's city staff and very pleasant, said that we would need to call back in, so it was awesome, and I was able to eat dinner during that time. The second thing I want to talk about is input to public hearings. I know Mayor Karen Moran did say that if you want to tell the public hearing, you have to tell Mike. It seems like it would be simpler to just allow people to call in again for public hearing, particularly if you speak during public comment, and then you want to save something to public hearing. And I think two of the callers ahead of me did have input to public hearing, so I'm hoping you'll take that for the hearing and not just for public comment. So it'd just be important to have the instructions and dial-in. I think you can put it in in one sentence. And then the real meat of what I'm talking about tonight is my last topic, which has to do with fast food value meal problems that can be solved. I'm using that as an analogy. Right now, the city has stormwater CIPs, and you are talking about the Transportation Improvement Plan and Transportation Master Plan projects in the last couple meetings. We know that there are problems with Zakuus Creek Fish Barrier because it's currently filled with gravel. We know that there are 24 to 37 homes that have been built in Tamarack under city permits since 2000, and the excessive flooding and overflows from those are sending pollutant and stormwater runoff down to Zakuus Creek. The safety of our areas impacted by some of these overflows and pollutants are increased by going across roads as well. There are some safety factors. Many people walk down from the lake up to the top of the plateau. There are no sidewalks, and it is already being used regularly by bicycles. It is not just a potential bicycle place, as the TMP tonight says. The King County East Lake Samamish Trail also has a walkway that they will be building at the Lewis Thompson Traffic Light at the parkway, and at that signal, people will be wanting to walk up, so the traffic will even increase from what it currently is. I also heard tonight with the flood people that there's too much going to Lake Samamish, so the real solution you already have in an approved Zakuus Basin Plan, which is sitting on the shelf. The number-one CIP project is to deal with the drainage on Lewis Thompson Road and add detention to it. If you also take a solution and run it up to 10th Avenue Northeast in Tamarack, that would solve some longstanding drainage problems that are flowing over to Zakuus Creek, filling that or going on roadways. And I do want to say that there is another lot that has been approved that goes into that flow as well, so it's not like we're not going to see less water. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do apologize for the wait this evening for public comment.
Okay, our last caller is on the line. I will go ahead and unmute them right now. Caller number five, you have three minutes.
I should get 15 minutes if I'm representing organizations, but this is Ramiro Valdarama Aramayo, and I am today authorized in speaking on behalf of the Samamish Rotary, Samamish Knights of Columbus, and the Samamish Kiwanis. We represent 200 active community service members in the city and annually grant over 200,000 to needy community organizations. On the agenda today, we see Mayor Moran has proposed council discussion on the idea of commissioning artwork to represent the civil liberties and racial and social justice for which Samamish stands. We welcome and support this discussion. Last year, the Rotary and Knights of Columbus began conversations on working together with the city and the Arts Commission on the artwork to celebrate peace and inclusiveness in the city of Samamish and recognize our long history of joint community service to the people in Samamish. Currently, the Rotary Club in Samamish has reprogrammed its funds and is dispersing over $110,000 to our community to support COVID-19 emergencies. Likewise, the Kiwanis has set up a $10,000 matching fund, and the Knights of Columbus are also dispersing funds. As you know, the Rotary has been promoting peace artwork as a global initiative, and the Samamish Rotary Club has also sponsored one at Eastside Catholic and another tour in process at YMCA in Central Washington. Mary Queen of Peace has one, as do our neighboring cities. These structures in Samamish have been specifically created to symbolize furthering peace and inclusion in our community. The Rotary International Peace Project says it is to symbolize the oneness of humanity and our common wish for a world at peace. The link is provided on your earlier in public comment. The Peace Project was formally presented at the ceremony at Central Washington University. Next slide, please, with Supreme Court Justice Stephen Gonzalez speaking. And the inauguration included the words from State Senator Monkradinga, as shown in the third slide, that hopefully will appear here shortly. These were great community events and were supported by our community. The peace and inclusion process can take many art forms and structures, and we would now ask that the city council, when commissioning this artwork, build on established programs and have the major community service organization in our city, the Rotary, the Knights of Columbus, and the Kiwanis, be part of the design process, working directly with the Arts Commission, as we had previously envisioned and discussed. This would ensure the project highlights our city and community joint values and our commitment to supporting our community and encouraging peace, justice, and inclusiveness. I would also add in the last five seconds that we still need our signage on the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see we have one more caller that just joined us. I will go ahead and unmute them. Caller, you have three minutes.
Hi, as instructed by the mayor, I'd like to give public hearing input for the flood damage thing. Should I call back in later?
We'll just keep you on the line, Mary.
So you want me to hold now, or do you want me to talk now?
The mayor says to just talk now.
Okay. For the flood damage, which is the public hearing tonight, my name is Mary Victor, and I live in Samamish. The first thing I do when I hear about something is I go online and try to find a map, and I was not able to find a map for FEMA from the city or for the flood area. But I do believe from prior research that I've done that pretty much the flooding happens along the Lake Samamish shores, which is the west edge of our city. From using the Samamish Property Tool, which is online, there is a green-colored shoreline designation that can be turned on, and there is also a seismic hazard, which is a brown-colored trail that can kind of be turned on. Both of those appear down by Lake Samamish, and I believe that those are the flood zones for the city of Samamish to which the flood damage would be affected for. I do not believe we have a big liquefaction zone in the city other than along the shoreline. So I guess my two questions is, or two comments that I'd like to give to council and staff is, the people who are living along wherever the mapped area is, if it's along the shoreline, do they understand that they're in a shoreline designation because there's specific code for that in Samamish Municipal Code? And also, they're in a seismic hazard area, and I'm not aware of any regulations the city has independently for seismic other than the International Building Code, but for houses that were built, maybe be older, I don't know if they could be instructed on things to look forward to to try to be safer in the event that we would have an emergency. So those are just a couple of things I saw in reading through the packet. I wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak for the public hearing on the flood damage tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, that's it. All right, so, council, we need to, I know this is choppy, and I'm sorry, but I don't believe that we did, or approval of agenda had been done, so we're going to go back and pick that up. At least that's what Mr. Sugg has told me.
I move to approve the agenda.
I have an amendment. Want to remove the TMP?
You're going to move up. I didn't hear it.
The TMP.
TMP, yep. Okay, so I have, did we have a second?
Do you have any amendment?
Okay.
Jason.
Jason, okay. So we have a first and a second with a removal of number 10. Did we have, did you have anything you needed? All right. So the agenda, as presented with the removal of number 10. Any discussion? You guys are going to make this easy tonight, thank you. All right. Let's do by hands. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, oop, seven zero? All right. Okay, so, consent calendar.
I move approve the consent calendar.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart, do I have a second? Okay, I think I saw Councilmember Jason, or Councilmember Ritchie was waving, so I guess that would be a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Good job. Okay, next is the public hearings, which we've already had input for. Public hearing tonight is on an ordinance of the city of Samamish, amending Chapter 15.10 of the Samamish Municipal Code titled 15, related to flood damage prevention, providing for severity and establishing an effective date, 02020-504. And do we, who's going to speak to this?
This is David Pyle, Community Development.
Hello, Mr. Pyle.
Good evening, Mayor. David Pyle, Community Development. I'm here tonight with Evan Fisher, Management Analyst in DCD, to talk about the amendments that are recommended and required by FEMA to amend the city's flood prevention ordinance, flood damage prevention ordinance. So what we're going to do is Evan is going to provide a brief presentation. We'll open it up to questions, can hold a public hearing on the issue. If you recall, this is something that was presented to you in small groups, in twos and threes, on May 26, 27, and 28. We have presented that same information on Connect Samamish. We have sent out notices to affected property owners to make sure they're aware of these changes. It's important to note that there is no change proposed to the base flood elevation, which is set by FEMA. What this is, is an effort to make our code more consistent with FEMA program, and FEMA is going through the process right now of reconciling many different jurisdictions flood damage prevention ordinances, and we are one of those, and we're looking at needing to have these changes adopted this summer. With that, I'll turn it over to Evan, and he can do a brief presentation.
Great, thank you, David, and thank you, City Council. Good evening. I am pulling up my shared screen right now, and it looks like it is working. So as David said, my name is Evan Fisher, and I'm a management analyst with DCD, and tonight I'll be going quickly through a presentation on the mandatory updates to Chapter 1510 flood damage prevention. As this is review for most of you, we'll be moving pretty quickly, but I'll be covering why we are completing these updates. We'll look at where the floodplain is within the city of Samamish. We'll take a brief overview of what the National Flood Insurance Program is. We'll highlight what the updates are and look at what the impacts of those updates are. So why are we completing those updates? As David said, these code updates are a requirement of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. By completing these updates, we'll be meeting federal requirements to continue eligibility for the National Flood Insurance Program, and by completing these updates, we'll have continued access to FEMA Disaster Relief Funds. It's important to note that these updates are not staff-driven. All changes were required or recommended by the Washington Department of Ecology on behalf of FEMA, and these updates must be adopted by August 19, or we will risk suspension from the National Flood Insurance Program. For review, I wanted to take a look at exactly where the floodplain is within the city of Samamish. As Mary pointed out earlier, the floodplain is the seven-mile stretch of the eastern shore of Lake Samamish, which is primarily developed as a single-family residential and covers roughly 62 and a half acres of land. So what is the National Flood Insurance Program? The NFIP is a federally underwritten insurance program, and it is available to communities that participate in floodplain management and meet federal requirements, which the city is currently doing. By meeting these requirements, we give our property owners within the floodplain access to choose to purchase flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. And as I stated above, if these updates are not completed, our property owners within the floodplain will lose access to that program. So what are the updates? Primarily, the updates are minor terminology adjustments. There are required amendments to existing definitions, the addition of new definitions, including more strict standards for flood-resistant design and construction. There are additions of a few new sections to the code and minor wording changes to come in to consistency with FEMA Region 10 and Ecology Minimum Standards. The updates also adopt, by reference, the 2020 Flood Insurance Study and the Flood Insurance Rate Map. The Flood Insurance Study looks at where flooding occurs within King County and sets insurance rates and determines the base flood elevation. What is most important to take away from this, as David mentioned before, is from the prior insurance rate study to this one, the base flood elevation for Lake Samamish within the city has not changed. It still remains at 36.2 feet. And what are the impacts of the updates? All new construction and substantial improvements within the floodplain will need to comply with provisions within the chapter, specifically the flood-resistant design and construction standards. Substantial improvement is defined as any repair, reconstruction, or improvement of a structure, the cost of which exceeds or equals 50% of the market value of the structure. Otherwise, there are no material impacts on homeowners. FEMA is not requiring that existing structures be updated to come into compliance with these code changes unless the property owner is completing one of the substantial improvements. Most important impact of these code updates is the continued eligibility for the National Flood Insurance Program. And with that, we are happy to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
Okay, council, do we have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
And I'm looking, I'm looking at the queue. Okay, I see a hand. So I'm going to go Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, in an effort to be flexible, we allowed Mary Victor to do her public comment, our public hearing comment before it was opened. Can we, for the record, stipulate that her comments will be included in the public hearing?
Karen, we can't hear you.
Can't?
Sorry, I'm going to ask the other comments to be included as well, that were from the other gentleman on the lake.
Mr. Brockway. Reed Brockway, Show.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Uh-oh, Pam, we're having audio issues.
I'm in the queue as well.
Pam, can you?
I just want to say I was having trouble hearing people. They were cutting in and out. Am I the only one, or is that happening to everyone?
Did you hear me at all?
Can you hear me?
Not all of it, I'm sorry. I can. It may be cleared up now. Could you just repeat what you said, Councilmember Ross? I'm sorry.
I think the mayor picked up a part of it, but I was just making sure that our citizens can work beyond the record for the public hearing before we opened the public hearing, that we stipulate that comments are part of this public hearing, because this is just being flexible.
Okay.
Karen.
Deputy Mayor, I do not see you here, but I'm deputy mayor.
Yeah, thanks. I think I was accidentally sending Mike a message instead of you. Anyway, Mr. Brockway, in his public comment- Anyway, Mr. Brockway, in his public comment, referenced something about a gated weir, as they had requested. I was just curious as to if staff could kind of help Council understand their request and how, or if it does, fit into these changes that we're adopting for FEMA purposes.
Yes, so what Mr. Nizelek and Mr. Brockway were referencing is an enhanced outlet to the north end of Lake Sammamish in the Willamore flood area, the confluence of the Lake Sammamish exit and the beginning of the Sammamish River. What has happened there over time is that upon FEMA's installation of a concrete weir spillway, which sets an elevation for Lake Sammamish. So if you think about it this way, in a dry year, the level of Lake Sammamish will not go be below a certain level because the concrete spillway will prevent further draining of the lake. Obviously, it could dry out a little more, it could go a little lower, however, it's not going to continue to drain out below that level. However, in a peak year, where there's a lot of rain, a big rain event, you might end up with a backup into the lake because the outlet is constrained. As it was designed, there was also a spillway, or excuse me, a floodway downstream of that weir structure that was put in. And that, over time, filled in with sediment and vegetation. And consequently, what happens is, is the water can't escape fast enough out of the lake, and it backs up into the lake and causes the lake elevation to raise to an undesirable height, causing damage to property. That typically is compounded by a wind event of some type and a fetch, which causes wave action and further damage to things like docks, bulkheads, lawns, other appurtenances that might be located along the shoreline. So what Mr. Nizelek and Mr. Brockway have raised is that they would like to see some sort of dynamic gate put in that would allow for additional drainage to occur, and could even be managed, in accordance with Mr. Brockway's letter, could be managed before we are anticipating a major event, where we could let out some additional water to provide some storage capacity in Lake Sammamish, or that would allow for an increased flow to occur during the event so that it would not back up in such a manner as we are seeing today.
Okay, do we have any?
I could add one more thing to that. It's a really complicated issue because it's, the property is owned by King County. It's part of the King County, trying to remember the name of the organization. There's a flood, I can't remember what it's called offhand, but there's a group within King County that is working on it. However, we have endangered fish species that are involved, and because of that, there's a water quality and water temperature issue and a fish passage issue that they're up against. So there's a group that King County put together, an advisory group that's been working on it, but they have stalled out recently in any effort to find a solution. So seeing that take off again and work more proactively towards a solution might be something we would want to, as a city, pursue advocating for.
Mr. Pyle, I had a question for you, and that, is this something that we should be working with the King County Flood Advisory Board on?
So that was the group that I meant to, I was trying to remember the name of.
Yeah, because we, I'm on that, and we have our first meeting on Friday. And so I should probably catch up with you, because if we've got projects or anything that we want to be addressed, we should, we need to throw those out there right away.
Yes, and that's actually a question that Mr. Brockway asked of me, was who is the city's representative on that group? And we did identify through the website that you, as the mayor, were the representative from the city of Sammamish.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Okay, so we are going to open up the public hearing. And we have got three callers, did you say? First thing I want to make sure is we take in Mary Victor's phone call and information, and then also the information from the two gentlemen from East Lake Sammamish Parkway that called in earlier. Make sure that information gets in for the hearing as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. And anybody else is calling in for the hearing now?
I will have to unmute the callers and ask them individually, so we can start with the first of three callers, who is still on the line.
Okay.
Caller, have you called in to provide public comment, or, excuse me, testimony on the public hearing this evening? All right, hearing nothing, I will move to the next one. All right, I'm going to unmute the next caller. Caller, have you called in tonight to provide public testimony on the public hearing?
Am I unmuted? This is Mr. Brockway.
Yes, excuse me, yes, you are.
Yeah. No, I had my crack at it.
Okay, great, thank you. And I believe the last caller is Ms. Victor, but we will confirm that.
Yeah, so you guys don't seem to have the ability to figure out if we're listening by phone, or if we want to call in to talk by phone, so chalk that one up, the technology challenge.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we can't hear you. Here we go.
Sorry, that was my fault. That was actually my fault. Yeah, I did. So again, I better say it, because my microphone was off. So we will have closed the public hearing, including everything, all phone calls that came in earlier into the public hearing record. Thank you. Okay. Next thing up, and this is unfinished business, is the Business Recovery Task Force. And Councilmember Ross, I'll let you start off on that.
So, Mayor, this is David Pyle, if I may, do we need to take action on adoption of the ordinance?
Yes. I move we adopt the ordinance, as written.
Oh.
Second.
Questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, all those in favor? Say aye, hands up.
Aye.
Chris, Rust? Are you an aye? Okay. Why do I have to look that far? Seven oh? Excellent. Okay, now can we move on? All right. Councilmember Ross, you want to take the next one, which is the Business Recovery Task Force?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is a follow-up from the last meeting, where we were talking about a short-term Business Recovery Task Force. It's primarily to address some of the suffering of businesses through the COVID crisis and plans to move forward, and if there's anything we can help facilitate and help these businesses. We've articulated in the Agenda Bill some duties and responsibilities proposals, some application process, and the membership as high-level deliverables to our discussion today. So what I recommend we do is we, by section by section, have the council comment on each item listed, and see if we've got consensus or additions or modifications to this outline, if you will. So with that, let's start with duties and responsibilities. I guess the best way is just go free-form and invite comment, either no comment, it's good as is, or comment, what should we add or modify?
Hang on while I read it again. I do have a question on item four. But it says a funding recommendations. This is CARES Act funding reimbursable for any employee that spends time on this. Is that correct? That may be a question for our city manager rather than you, Chris. If we establish this grant process, and somebody has to review applications, if there is a staff member associated with that, that's CARES Act funding reimbursable, is that correct?
Yes, you'd be correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had for that portion, Chris.
Oh, I can tell by hands up. Pam, is your hand up?
It is, Madam Mayor. So, one, thank you guys for working on this. I think it's really important that we help our business community. One question I have that may be more broad than just the duties and responsibilities, but, and if you want, I can save it till the end, but one question I have is, is there a timeline established for all of this?
I mean, I would like to see letters go out to the businesses and have this thing started ASAP, like, next week.
Okay, so you are expecting that we're going to take action on this tonight? Is that then?
Yes, otherwise, if we don't, then we'll hope that it goes, gets done next week.
Okay, terrific. So do we have, we talked about defining the current needs and reviewing existing resources. I guess if we're going to take action and actually establish this, I feel like there's more information that would be needed there, like, how will we define the current needs? And how do we define what a need is? And I know that seems picky, but I think it's really important to kind of understand all of that. And then also in number four, where it says recommend criteria for a grant funding process, if the grant process is established, review applications and make a funding recommendation to the council. So it makes it sound like there may be a possibility that we wouldn't set up funding, and I guess I'd want to know, well, what's the criteria for determining if we're going to have a grant funding process or not?
Okay, well, first, we figured out, we figured that until we get all the businesses to sit together and know what exactly the needs are, it's hard to guess what that is, because you're, until you get everybody sitting around the table and telling you exactly what their needs are, we don't know what that is. And so it was amazing to me when I sat down and looked at the huge list of businesses that are in this city. You know, it was amazing to me that, you know, there's that many businesses. That's a huge list. We need to, we need to sit down with them and ask that question. We can't sit here and guess that. Second, the criteria, we don't know if we're going to have money to do this. So to spend a whole lot of time figuring out what the criteria is, we don't know if we're going to have it. The first place I would look would be, you know, looking at the Small Business Association. That's where most people start with their loan stuff. So, and with the grant process, so that's probably what would be looked at. I would hope we would have money to put out for grants, but that would have to come from the council.
Okay, because I would recommend that if we're going to do something where we're going to define current needs, while it would be lovely to be able to sit down together, obviously, there are some challenges with that. One, sheer numbers, and two, we're still not able to get together. So I would love to see if we're going to move forward on this to maybe really drill down a little bit and talk about, first of all, I know we received email from the Sammamish Chamber of Commerce that they've already done a survey, so they may have some information. And I would highly recommend that we would need to find ways to conduct such a survey to find that out. And I would highly recommend, as someone who's worked on a number of projects like that in my professional career, that we would hire someone in to help us put together such a survey, to ensure that we do it, ask the questions in the right way, so that we get the data that we're expecting. Because it's amazing how, you know, how you ask the question, you can get very different answers on that. So I would highly recommend that if we need to determine those needs, that we would bring someone in very quickly and be able to conduct some sort of surveys and use, you know, mail methods, digital methods, et cetera, to make sure that we really do reach all of those businesses that you said you have a list of, which is great. And I would also want to make sure that we would be able to define what we would call needs, you know, I'm assuming that they need to be needs based on COVID impacts to be eligible for this. And then I hadn't even gotten to the question about money, but you said there may or may not be money. So I guess if we're going to establish such a process, shouldn't we know if there is, in fact, any funding available before we go through all of this work?
Well, it's not all about funding, because there's a lot of things in sitting in a, well, I got to sit for the first half of a meeting yesterday, and then Mike Suggs sat through the second half of a meeting yesterday, and it was with different cities on the different things that you can do that are not related to money. And some of them have to do, you know, with permitting and parking and cafe seating outside, which is not necessarily just for restaurants, it's for people like in tax shops and stuff like that, where they don't have a large waiting area, so they have to have people sitting outside in cafe seatings to wait to get in next. And so it's having, and I would have never thought about that, honestly. So it's having that sort of input from all those different people, and having to basically expand their storefronts out to the sidewalk. And looking at, you know, what exactly is needed, and what's going to be needed for permitting, and what's, you know, how exactly we can do that, what's, you know, where is there open space next to buildings? And where is there open space in parking lots? What is public? What is private? And, you know, it's that sort of stuff. So it's not all about money. And it's work, can we get free signage? And can we get something downloaded so people can print it? It's that sort of thing as well.
Okay, then I guess my recommendation would be that we, that we maybe dig a little bit more into how we can define what those current needs are. And then also, there's the item that says reviewing the existing resources at the, for businesses. Or, I'm sorry, the third one, which is identifying the gaps between needs and existing resources. Would they be establishing thresholds as well? That says, like, if your need is great, this much greater than what's there? I mean, I guess it's just, I just would, curious if we know that yet.
No, I think a lot of that would be talked about within the group, but by the time they sit down and they meet for the first, you know, first couple of times and kind of talk through, you know, what they had when they started versus where people are at now, what's available through the government programs, what can you easily get, what is unable to be gotten? You know, where, you know, the PPL program, the, you know, some of the programs for the businesses, can you go through the, you know, the business associations? You can, there's all sorts of different small things that you can go through. And there's, you know, it depends, the restaurant stuff, you know, like the pay program for the loans back doesn't work very well for the restaurants' associations because of the fact that you have to pay it back too quickly. And so, you know, looking at ways that we can try to help them, and just try to work together a little bit.
Can I comment, just a minute? Councilmember Stewart's bringing up great points and inputs that should be input to the committee. And we just need to be cognizant of the fact that these are duties and responsibilities of the task force to help the full council deliver this program. And also, remember, there's two, later in this presentation, there's two council members on the committee, but input such as Councilmember Stewart will be brought forward, such as chamber input and so on, through the recommendations of the council. So the council members on the committee bring forth additional input from the council as well. So I think that way, we are effectively covering most, all those concerns, or the collective input of the businesses, and anything coming from the council through our two council member representatives.
Chris, are we going to continue to go through, like, the application process and the membership?
Yep. Are we good with duties and responsibilities as is? Or, I think, I think we're going to be seeking more clarity, and that's what the task force will do, and we've got some council input to bring forward as well.
Okay.
Okay.
I hope we've got some questions in the queue. I know, I can't see them all. So, councilmember Richie.
Thank you. Couple quick questions. I'm at the Coronavirus Fund Guidance for State, Territorial, Local, and Tribal Governments' Distribution. There's like a whole list of requirements here. Necessary expenditures include incurred due to the public health emergency, requirements that expenditures be incurred due to public health emergencies, that mean expenditures use to take actions. I mean, there's a ton of things that we could go through here in terms of the requirements that we're going to need to live under as far as the monies or what rules we're going to need to apply to, and I guess I'm, they're very multi-layered. I mean, there's a lot of different requirements, and they're not clear. I guess the big question I have, I thought there was $1.9 million coming in to the city that was specifically designated for a small business recovery. If that's not accurate, or we don't know, I don't know. I thought that was the case, so I'll just pause there, but I got one more question after that.
I'm going to let, I'm going to let the city manager speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for a clarification on the COVID funding. $1.9 million, $50,000 was designated for COVID-related expenses. That could range from assistance to businesses. It was primarily identified originally for local agencies to offset the additional expenses that they could identify that was related to responding to the COVID emergency. And then more work was done to more fully identify that. I had promised the council to get some of that criteria, and with everything going on, I've overlooked that, and we'll get that out in the next day or two. But it is not just business-related, it's very expansive.
Yeah, no, all good, Dave. I appreciate that. I think that, there's no, I mean, there's a ton of confusion and no worries. I guess I was just trying to figure out, when it comes to federal grants, I have, I deal with that a little bit at work, so I'm trying to make sure we're responsive to the requirements of the federal grants, or the block grants that go from the federal government to the state and then distributed to the counties or the cities, however it's going to come in. There's certain requirements in terms of where it can go to, how quickly we need to get it out, and what are the requirements of the groups that we're giving it to. And if there are eligible companies or small businesses, and we are utilizing those resources, and they are tied to a federal grant, I would just want to incorporate those requirements, those federal government requirements into our plan as far as how we're going about, you know, discussing these things. I don't think we know yet, I guess would be my concern. I don't know that we are, maybe it's a legal question, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that the regs, I just looked up, I'm not seeing the regs that are clearly stated, and there's really no guidance from the state government that I've seen in the RCWs or any kind of local blogs talking about it. So, I'm not seeing anything on here that would tell us what we need to do, or when we need to do, or by. I mean, having said that, I would hope that we can have, find a way to kind of utilize the money for our local businesses in a way that's specific. You know, we have a ton of home-based businesses, and we have a ton of storefronts that have been, you know, basically shut down for months. What are the requirements? We have emergency services that have taken a huge bite out of our budget, right? I mean, what are the resources? How do we utilize them? And can we put them in different pods or different silos so that we don't co-mingle funds that have different regulatory requirements as far as the federal government's concerned? I just don't want us to run into a compliance issue when it comes to, you know, that's around the federal government. The only other thing, well, then I'll be quick, then, this is the only other point I had to add. Thank you very much, Chris and Karen, for putting this together. I think it's a really good framework. I don't think we need to know where the money's going yet to start talking to people, or if there's money coming in or whether strings tie to it. I think we need to, you get a lot of information just from starting the conversation and reaching out to people. And I would recommend that, as councilmember Stewart mentioned, I know the chamber's done a lot of work on this already, so, you know, all other issues aside, I mean, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. If we can utilize the chamber and work with them and bring them in as a partner on this issue, they have information, they have contacts with local businesses, and to, it just delays, I mean, what, time is money, right? If we know somebody needs something, and the chambers work with them, and they're aware of it, and the clock's ticking, let's bring them in as a partner on this issue. All other issues aside, this is a good way to partner with another local, you know, public-facing group that's trying to do good for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hey, first off, I do want to thank Mayor Moran and councilmember Ross on putting this together. It just so happens, in the last three days, I've talked to six business owners in town. These guys are pulling their hair out. This is really serious stuff for them. So, anything we can do to provide some assistance, or even some hope that there are people working on this, I think would be enormous. Except for that, I think councilmember Richie and councilmember Stewart and councilmember Ross have pretty much covered all of my questions already, so thank you.
So, yeah, only one comment, if that's all right, Karen, Mayor Moran.
Of course.
Thanks. So, the one thing I watched with, with the initial funding that the government provided was that the people who had the relationships with the banks got some of the money, and it was also in the, what we didn't see was what went on in the back room to figure out, kind of what councilmember Richie was talking about, where's the money coming from, what pocket, what's the regulations? So, that's going to take someone who's experienced in this kind of work. And I didn't see that when I read through all this, you know, that one or two person that may actually need to be, that in the future here, funding is going to be available, that could actually get the funding. And so, I don't know if we know who that person is yet, but I would recommend that we find that person to get the money, right? If you don't have the money, you can't have a grant process then to give it away, so. And I just didn't see that kind of a person with those skills listed in here as somebody that was necessary to make this thing work. Thank you.
Actually, that's perfect. That fits into our wildcard spot.
Um, Mayor, I'd ask, when you guys presented this last time, if you guys were able to find out if there was another organization that we could possibly plug into, because I think some of the other councilmembers have brought up some good points. One, and you have mentioned it, right, time is of the essence here, businesses need to help right now, and this is a really heavy lift, and particularly if we do have a large chunk of money to provide, that would be great. And even to sort through the other issues, when you were doing your research, I know that there's a couple of, a couple of organizations where other eastside cities have come together to work together to assist businesses. There's the Restart 425 program, and there's also, what was it called, the Hub or something like that? And so, I was wondering if you guys had looked into that to determine if we could join with those other cities and leverage the infrastructure that they may have already put together to assist us in that, in this effort, and to maybe make it go a little bit faster.
You know, basically, what I'm doing is I am taking the footwork that has come out from the other cities, and I'm following their process. And we don't know what the money's going to be that we're getting regarding money strictly for businesses from the business association for a few more weeks yet. So, we hopefully will be, had our first meeting before that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I want to draw back to interim city manager's comment that it's reimbursing agencies, not the businesses, and which, right, which means to me, it would be reimbursement of the city making any dispersments that are COVID-related or any type of subsidies. With that in mind, then, we need to make sure that's very clear, because part of this effort is, in having councilmembers on the task force, is to be very responsive to policy issues. We may need to make some decisions that actually disperse or provide any assistance to the businesses that's reimbursable. It may not operate as a fund to just simply dole out funds, because that's what I'm driving at, and I think that's what I heard from interim city manager. Mr. Rudet, do you have any comment on it, or is the sound going away?
Sorry, my computer's dying. Did you need me to comment on something?
Did anybody hear anything I said? I'm sorry.
We did.
I heard you, councilmember.
Okay, thank you. So, I think it's just important, I guess the punchline to interim city manager as we go through understanding the $1.9 million, is it reimbursing agencies? And if it's reimbursing agencies, does this agency have to work aggressively on potential help to our businesses through subsidies and otherwise other policies? So, we may have some policy work or decisions to make that become reimbursable, and can we do that now or in the future, those dispersments and subsidies? So, it's budget neutral, but maximizing utilization of $1.9 million. This is awkward.
I was just saying, is someone talking other than you, because I'm not hearing anyone else?
Can I, because Jason, can I cut for a second and say, I think that's a really good idea. I think we need to start building that out, Chris. I think you're right on. We don't know, right? I mean, that's, we need to find someone, I was just going to suggest we reach out to One Redmond, because I know they have a plan in place right now dealing with this stuff. Mayor, I don't know if you reached out to, you know, Ms. Hudson, Katrina Hudson over at, or Christina Hudson over at One Redmond, but I know just from speaking, they have something in place for this, and they're farther down the process than we are in that they may, because One Redmond's different in terms of its organizational structure, but that might be a way to kind of mirror what they're doing and bring it into what we're doing as a city, or maybe establish a separate group that could do this that's outside the city, so it's, I don't know. I think what Chris brings up is a really important point.
Okay, well, I was going to talk with the, is a quote, Mayor, first thing tomorrow morning, but I will make One Redmond my second call. What was the name down at One Redmond?
Well, Christina Hudson is who I've spoken with before about issues, and I think she's either in charge or one of the people that are at the top of staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, councilmember, are you going to continue on with your presentation?
Okay. Are we done with duties and responsibilities? I think we didn't get to the application process. It's, scroll up.
Councilmember Ross, are you still speaking, or I, I'm not hearing?
No, I'm waiting for feedback. Everybody have a chance to absorb the 10 points on potential questions on the application, and if there's any thoughts on that.
I do. There, can I go?
I don't have them in my queue, but okay. Show me your hands, because I'm not seeing you in my queue here. Hold on. Deputy Mayor.
So, I would suggest one of the other questions for applicants would be if they've already received an SBA PPP loan or any other federal loan due to COVID crisis.
Would you do that for application for this, or wouldn't you do that for an application for a grant?
Yes, an application for a grant, but that, I mean...
This is for application for, this is for just application to, for the committee?
Okay, gotcha. It just, it looks like your question's there, like, how many jobs have you lost due to COVID-19 is a question for an applicant.
Right, well, we're trying to find people that have, you know, that have had, you know, a mix of people that have lost people's jobs, and how many people have lost jobs, because some people have lost a lot of people, and some people, you know, are, they're the only person and their employee.
It might still be a valid question to ask the applicant. I mean, it changes their view on assistance from the city if they've received a loan already, or if they're, you know, desperately in need of one. In fact, I think getting a combination, you know, of those that have received an SBA loan and those that have not.
Okay.
I have a question. So, I know that Kirkland, I think, has handed out $250,000, I think, already, their relief fund, right? They put together a Kirkland Small Business Relief Fund, and I was curious if you, they stated that they had a group of impartial, what do they call it, evaluators. Do you know who they selected and how they selected their group of people?
I think that, well, I'm using the same thing that they did to pick their committees, and what they did is they did a process of coming into their city hall with a number. So, you don't know the businesses when they come in, you'll never know, you just got a number. You'll never get a name.
No, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean the selecting people to get the loans, I meant, for this process here, how did they, how did they select their impartial evaluators?
You mean, for the people that sit on the committee?
Yeah, so they said that they had a committee of impartial evaluators to review the applications and balance quantitative and qualitative information.
Oh, I can double check. What I heard is that they all did it the way they had set up their other committees, but I'll double check.
I guess one question I'm curious about on here is, are you a member of any organizations or groups that promote businesses? I'm not sure, like, is that, I guess, what's the relevance of that question in terms of being on this task force?
Are you a member of the chamber? Are you a member of the Small Business Association? Are you a member? And that's where it gives us a little of knowing if somebody knows, you know, especially if they're a member of the Small Business Association, because that's sort of, you know, it tells us a little bit more of where their background is.
So, I know you mentioned, and we kind of get to it further, you were looking for, like, geographic distribution. I guess it would be interesting to me if we're trying to set up this impartial commission would be to really understand what are we looking for in terms of that type of diversity on this kind of a commission? Are we, do we, we don't have any questions about, you know, minority-owned businesses. I would think we would want to have some criteria about the type of people that would be part of this group that's going to evaluate the applications to make sure that we do have that appropriate cross-section, so... So I guess that might be the one thing that I feel like we might need to add here is, what are we looking for in terms of the makeup of this task force? And then we could come up with a list of questions that would help us ensure we were able to get that type of diversity on here. Right, like, I think one of the ones we have is, like, what's the structure of your business? I think that's important. Do we want, you say, where's your business located? I think, I think that's what you're trying to get at there, is some cross-section of business types to make sure we have good representation, but I do feel like there might be other things if we knew what that criteria was that we were looking for in terms of the makeup of the task force, that we could make sure that our questions spoke to that, or ensured we could get the information to make sure we had that.
Should be asking, are you a minority-owned business?
I'm sorry?
Could a question be, are you a minority-owned business?
Correct. I think that that, you know, again, in terms of what, what kind of makeup do we want on this task force, and then let's make sure that those questions will give us the data we need in order to achieve that. And I would highly recommend as well that we use a similar process, Mayor, like you're talking about, which is that we, we don't know who the people are, we hide that information during the selection process, and we base it just on the criteria in terms of, you know, we need, we need one of these businesses and one of those, or whatever, so that the selection on the task force is also impartial.
I'm writing notes.
I have a question, if I can. I think Jason's in the queue ahead of you, Christine. I can't see.
Let me see what my queue is. Oh, I actually have, okay, so council member Richie.
Hey there, thank you. My recommendation is to delete number 10, and then to have numbers 1 through 9 be part of the process that the membership, we're trying to build an organization to ask questions. I don't think it's incumbent upon us to figure out exactly what questions they should ask. Many of us own small businesses, many of us work for businesses, not a lot of us have experience with the COVID-related things, some of us do. So I'd recommend that we delete the two council members and add up to three. I would recommend having a chamber member on there for that purpose, but I would, I don't think we need council members or government involved in this. We're trying to find a way to, I agree with some of the potential questions, but I also think that we should leave that up to the organization, or this, this membership, this task force, to figure out who it is. And I think that having council members on there, to me, is, we could better use that space for other businesses. One more home-based business, I don't know, the chamber, another applicant, something like that. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Again, these questions are the questions we're asking to select the people on the task force, is that correct?
That's correct.
More above. That's to apply member of the task force, yes.
I have a question, if I can.
Oops, deputy mayor.
So one thing I just wanted to clarify on intent here, or at least bring up the question, is are we going to make a requirement of, you know, who's going to be on this task force be Sammamish-based businesses and/or their residents? Because that's not clarified here. I probably just could be, it's not the intent.
Yeah, well, I was, I think we should talk about that. In my mind, yes, because the money is going to be, is dedicated to Sammamish, so it should be Sammamish-based business.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to agree. It just, it struck me that it wasn't spelled out there, and that would probably be an element we'd want to add, is that Sammamish-based business.
Councilmember Stewart.
I'm sorry, I just, I love to be data-driven, and one of the things you mentioned, Mayor, and it kind of just struck me, was you mentioned that you had a list of all the businesses that are based in Sammamish, and I would think that in looking at the membership makeup, we would want it to be representative of that list of businesses. So I feel like there's a way we could really make this very data-driven very quickly, which would be to understand that, and I would agree with council member Richie that I think that we don't want counsel on this task force, just like we don't have counsel on the Human Services Commission. We would want this to be made up of, of non-council members, so that this commission would truly be independent. Although I would be open to understanding how these other cities, who was on their commissions, and how they selected the people on their commissions, since it does appear that most of the other Eastside cities have already put these together and handed out funding. So, but I do think it would be great to be data-driven. I mean, if we have, if we have 3,000 home-based businesses, less than, you know, a certain amount of revenue per year, and we only have, you know, 50 storefronts, then does it make more sense to have, you know, two people from home-based businesses? And obviously, I'm making all that data up, but I feel like that would be a more appropriate way to determine the makeup of the, of the task force.
Okay, well, given the time, clearly, we're not going to get this finished tonight, because we've got too much else going on, and it's getting late, so I'm going to suggest that we bring the rest of this back next week.
Mayor, would it be possible for us to have some sort of twos and threes, to be able to go through some of this, to help expedite it at the next meeting?
I'm not gonna do it, it's up to you.
How about if we just ask for an update at the next meeting? Thank you for the work you guys put into it. Let's see if we can get some, some steps forward by the next meeting, which is next week, right?
Yeah, everybody's got their hands up in the air going, oh, God. Okay, next week.
Sweet.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there's a question.
Is there more?
We're gonna need to extend this meeting in two. Can we have a break before we get into the next item, please? I would move that we extend to 11:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Jason's got his hand up.
Jason. All right, all those in favor, put your hand up. Oh, it's going to be, okay, who wants to go to 11?
11?
If you say, do I want to go, that's different.
Okay, who's voting to go to 11? Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
But we get a break.
Oh, that's true, okay. Five to two. Oh, I guess six to one. Okay, with a, before we move forward onto new business, then, a health and safety break is Sammamish 5. Okay, so we're on to new business. The next thing on the new business is the emergency ordinance for the Tent City 4. I'm going to, that's you. Okay, Mr. Sugg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Mr. In interim City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I am your senior management analyst. On April 21st, the city council granted a 30-day extension of Tent City 4's temporary homeless encampment permit due to COVID-19 emergency. That permit is scheduled to expire on June 22nd, yet the governor's stay-at-home order has been extended until July 1st, resulting in Tent City 4 being unable to find a new encampment location. They were looking at two sites. One was a synagogue in Bellevue, which they were scheduled to go to pre-COVID, and the other is DNR land up at High Point in Issaquah. Both locations are still unavailable. Mary Queen of Peace has internally approved the extended use of their property for the encampment, and they stated that there has been broad support within the parish for hosting Tent City 4. Exhibit 1 in your packet contains an emergency ordinance for your consideration. If approved tonight, this ordinance would extend Tent City 4's permits by an additional 30 days from June 22nd to July 22nd, which would provide them with more time to secure a site. I will go ahead and turn it over to the mayor for discussion.
No move.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and so discussion. Does anybody have questions? Let me see if I got somebody in my queue. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to extend this, and before, I was just wondering, before we did that, has there been any, any public comment, yea or nay, on the extension or people's experience with this, or has there been any pushback from the public we need to be aware of from our residents?
I have not seen any public comments come in, although I have not read all of the public comments for this evening.
And as far as the city manager's office goes, I'm not aware of any comments that have come through to my office, or the clerk has not advised of any opposition.
Okay, that was my question. Have we had anything coming in? Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Any hands up? I don't see any. Okay, we have a first and a, oh. Councilmember Train, did you have a question? No questions, okay. Okay, hearing no questions. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right. That is a 7-0 vote, thank you. Next on the agenda is the commissioning of artwork representing civil liberties and racial, social justice, and Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Mike Sugg, senior management analyst. Mayor Moran is seeking the council's feedback on the idea of commissioning artwork to represent the civil liberties and racial and social justice for which the man stands. If the council approves of this work, staff would work with the Arts Commission to begin scoping the project, including determining things such as an estimated budget and a location. Once the Arts Commission has had a chance to do that scoping and determine a, an appropriate budget, that would then come back to the city council for approval. So tonight, the question is, does the council want to approve the Arts Commission to go ahead and start scoping this work and bring it back? At this time, there is no, no need to allocate any budget to this, as we do not know how much the artwork will cost at this point. And the Arts Commission has been unable to meet over the past few months due to the necessary or routine restrictions imposed by Governor Inslee's order. Those restrictions have lifted, so the commissions may begin meeting to discuss this, and I believe the Parks Department has scheduled the Arts Commission meeting upcoming here pretty soon. And there are a couple places in the budget that we could pay for it this year, potentially, or this is something that we could include in the budget for 2020, or, excuse me, 2122. With that, I will go ahead and turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I liked Miro Valdarama's public comment today regarding the engagement of Sammamish Rotary, Sammamish Knights in Columbus, and Sammamish Quanis. I think it's important to include those folks who have started some activity in this area. Also, want to help fund a good portion of this, if not, to help us become a more robust solution. So I recommend that we, not only, we have them partner with the Arts Commission, so representative or representatives of those three organizations with the Arts Commission.
Can you make sure they've got, we also had a couple letters that came in today. I'll make sure you got those, and send those along with ideas and people to partner with and that sort of thing. Okay, so I guess what we're looking for, just what do you need from us?
You got more in the queue.
I do. Well, I should know. Okay, so councilmember Gamblin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I was reading the New York Times today, and one of the articles said, "In the last two weeks, American voters' support for Black Lives Matter movement increased almost as much as it had in the preceding two years." So I think it's just an indication that the time is really good for looking at this. I would support Mr. Valdarama's point to include our civic organizations in this if we could, and beyond that, I would support this 100%. I think it's a great idea.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of moving this forward. I really think we should have the Arts Commission taking the lead on this and engaging not only the civic organizations that were mentioned tonight, but just as they would with any art piece, our general public. You know, I don't, I realize there are civic organizations, I'm a member of one of them mentioned, so, but I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, trying to artificially limit who can give the Arts Commission input, and I think this is the Arts Commission thing, this is why we have them, and, you know, we just say, yes, we want them to do it, and we let them take the lead on it, and they can open up, say, you know, to the public to give input, and I suspect this might be a piece that might garner more input than any other piece the Arts Commission has ever commissioned.
Any other comments? Okay, do you need a motion to move this forward, or do, okay, so he's looking for a motion to move this forward.
I'm going to say it to the Arts Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have deputy mayor and councilmember Stewart. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like a 7-0. Okay, next on our agenda is anti-bias resources and practices of the city of Sammamish. And with us, we have got Celia Wu.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. As you know, my name is Sally Wu. I'm part of the communications team. I recently joined this awesome team of public servants that are serving the city of Sammamish, and I was honored when asked to work with Mary Beth in human resources on this topic of which I have a great passion for. So first slide here, we were asked to come back to council on what our current anti-bias resources and practices are. And, okay, so, policies. Policies at the city of Sammamish are governed and mandated by three levels of government. First, there's King County, second, there's Washington State, and third, there's the federal government. And these policies address equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity, as well as nondiscrimination of protected classes. And the areas that are governed by these policies fall into training, policy, application process, as well as agreements, and I'll be going into each of these areas. into each of these areas briefly. First, there's mandatory training. We have mandatory training for all of our employees, which includes diversity in the workplace, and also promoting a workplace free of harassment, discrimination, and retaliation. This is training that is available and mandated for employees, as well as for managers and supervisors. Policies are also covered in our employee handbook. And very briefly, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity, employee harassment and discrimination, pay equity, ADA compliance, disability accommodation, anti-harassment and discrimination, and sexual harassment. We have put here the page numbers in the employee handbook where these policies appear. The application process. When is, when is applying to work at the city of Sammash, statements that we are a city, the city of Sammash is an equal opportunity employer. There is also an accommodation statement that accompanies each job posting. And we are using NeoGov to do and collect demographic surveys on gender, ethnicity, and veteran status. Lastly, all agreements from the city of Sammash, that would be agreements of contractors, with vendors, public work vendors, for instance, and with grants. They all contain equal employment opportunity language, as well as non-discriminatory language. And so I'm happy to say that the city of Sammash is, in fact, 100% compliant with all of these policies that are, that address anti-bias. Okay, and now.
Madam Mayor, council members, just a continuation from the Sammash Police Department's side, since there's been a lot of questions asked recently with everything that's going on, just to give a better idea of the type of training and, and things that we go through. So we undergo many, many hours of training, and, but with a recent and ongoing focus that includes justice-based policing, de-escalation concepts and tactics, control tactics, implicit bias training, and crisis intervention, all of which is being discussed and talked about and asked about, again, in the current environment. So we'll just do a highlight on some of those areas. Just real quick, just to give a general idea, within the sheriff's office, which we are part of, there's about $5 million spent annually on training in the sheriff's office, but that includes everything, the overtime to get it done, travel, instructors, et cetera. But there's, there's a lot of dollars spent on making sure that that is accomplished. Recently, King County added $1.3 million towards our budget for bias awareness and de-escalation training for 2019, 2020. Every officer is required to do an additional 24 hours of training for the WAC code, it's Washington Administrative Code. And there is now, in association with I-940 that was recently passed, in addition to that 24 hours, every three years, we have to do another 40 hours, which includes the patrol tactics, de-escalation, mental health training, bias awareness, police and race, cultural history awareness, and first aid and trauma care. This is, I'm not going to go with these next several slides, but it's more of just, this is for you to review. This is required training for commissioned personnel on an annual and biannual basis. And the next three sides, unfortunately, it looks like they were cut off, and I apologize for that. But this is up-to-date for 2020 training. We also have 2019 and 2018, which just shows a lot of the additional training that we go through each year, just to continue updating, especially a big piece of this is the updated legal training. So we're always trying to stay up to date in recent court findings, so that we are making sure that we're doing everything according to law and according to the latest findings. Justice-based policing. This justice-based policing began in 2012 at the King County Sheriff's Office. The focus is on the lead model, which means to listen and explain with equity and dignity. And really, that's just an overarching focus on our interactions with every single person that we come in contact with. And we, every department member's been through that training, and we've continued to use that in all our other training, even within our own disciplinary actions. We look at whether or not that lead model was followed, and that's often addressed as part of the training if there is an issue. Our de-escalation concepts and tactics. Again, this is something that's been discussed a lot recently. Our de-escalation training emphasizes, when safe and feasible, the need to slow down encounters, increase contact distances, and maximize resources to decrease the need to use force. That can be using other persons, family members, counselors, to have, and again, it's really about slow down. We don't need to rush in. If we have to increase distances, if people are, you know, if they have better contact with someone, everyone else backs off. And again, the idea is to make sure that we can de-escalate the situation and take care of the person that we're speaking with in the, in the best way possible with minimal to zero force used, hopefully. De-escalation emphasizes control, assessment, and transition to lower, to no level of force once compliance is gained. That's important. There is a slide at the end that we'll talk about that a little bit more. Current training includes a review of concepts, those above, emotional intelligence recognition, threat assessment identification, and scenario-based training in accordance with the I-940 standards. And again, we're just building on what we've been doing for a long time, and continue to review, and then add any new training or areas that we can improve on. Our implicit bias training, it was introduced in the sheriff's office around 2012. It has been presented to supervisors and command staff, and it was also presented during some of our online training, that 24 hours of training that we are required to take. Currently, it is required for all commissioned and non-commissioned staff. The course teaches everyone it's normal to have implicit bias. And implicit bias awareness can allow an officer to better understand another person's perspective. Ultimately, the goal is to gain understanding, develop mutual respect, and find common ground to promote positive interaction. And again, if you think about going back to that lead model, listen, explain with equity and dignity, I mean, it really, all of this continues to fall under how we want to treat people, and how we want to be treated, and trying to make sure that we have positive interactions as an end result. The crisis intervention training. So this is required throughout the state, and it's now trained, all new officers coming through the academy go through this training. Do they go through the 40 hours or eight?
They build it in the 40 hours.
Yeah, they build in, they build into the 40 hours of training when they're coming out of the academy. Sheriff's Office, the state is requiring that all officers in Washington State have eight hours of training by July of 2021. The sheriff's office is requiring all deputies to have 40 hours of the training by July 2021. Right now, we're at 97% of the Sammash police officers have completed the 40 hours of training to date. And the only reason we don't have, we've added a couple of new people, and we just need to confirm that they have it. If not, we'll make sure that that's done immediately. Ultimately, this is helping deputies to assess if a person is in crisis, has behavioral health issues, or a combination thereof. And again, those other ways of slowing down, backing off, finding different resources, all of those same things come into play. This is intertwined constantly. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is identify assistance and resources that officers can use to support families and individuals in crisis. For example, the mobile crisis teams. There's not a lot out there, but they do exist, and it includes mental health professionals and others, along with law enforcement, that can go and try to make contact before there's an issue, especially if we're aware of problems, family, and/or, you know, counselors and people contact us, and then we go as a team to try and make sure that we can get that person different options as opposed to when they are in a mental health crisis. Control and assess. So this is just a slide that talks more about some of those tactics. Trained to control subjects. So deputies and officers are trained to control subjects in a manner in which officers are constantly assessing the situation. Officers are trained in a variety of control tactics. You know, so don't say control holds, it's about control tactics, and are constantly reassessing for compliance, and then making adjustments while engaged with the subject. So in other words, we are constantly talking to each other and taught in our, when we're going through this training, to, to see what's happening, monitor, and as we gain compliance, back off to, again, minimal to zero force, so that we don't have the issues that we've recently heard about with Mr. Floyd and others. And per the King County Sheriff's Office Master DT instructors, the incident in Minnesota is contrary to any training that we currently do, and we think that's important. Mistakes can happen, obviously, we understand that. But our job, the training is always about constantly assess what's happening and adjust, not just going into, you know, one situation or one control tactic, and then maintaining that no matter what. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pingray. This is Sally Wu back, and I have a few more slides about next steps. We're presenting some plans from staff. So first is Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, which HR began planning in January of 2020 of this year. Of course, COVID hit, but I think we are going to be back on track with this initiative. Next slide, please. There are going to be four main phases of this initiative, and as all things, we have to start with data. Data collection, so that we can have data-based decision-making of what to do and how to go forward with our strategy, which is the second phase, to develop a strategic, a strategic plan based on the data to meet our objectives. Third phase is the implementation of the initiative. And the fourth phase, evaluation and continual audit of the plan, always revisiting if it's meeting our objectives. Next. Another initiative that is being planned is a town hall, and it is a discussion on police and fire relations and racial justice here in Sammash. The details are being planned in coordination with the Sammash Police Department and ESI Fire and Rescue. Gracias.
Gracias. Okay, I'm sure we're going to have a bunch of people in the queue here, so hang on. Okay, so first in the queue is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. Really appreciate it. On the Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, can we get a little more details, like who's conducting that, and are there goals that have been identified from it? The slide talked about, you know, collecting data and then implementing the initiative, but it wasn't clear what, what that might be.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I've been muted for so long. This is Mary Beth, and I'm Senior HR Analyst for the city. The program is quite detailed. We start off with a survey that goes out to all the staff and collect data. It's got to be done holistically. So once we collect that data, we go through the four stages, analyzing it and assessing where we need to be with the city. And it's very, it's cyclical, it keeps going. It's a program that never ends. As we get in new employees and, and we grow with our initiatives, it evolves. And it's quite detailed.
Is the goal to ensure we have, you know, diversity in hiring? Is the goal to make sure that the workplace fosters diversity and inclusion? Like, are there specific goals that have been outlined? And if there are, is there a place where we can make sure that public knows?
Well, the initiative is to build a strong diversity and inclusion program, and to have a good, strong framework with the city. And I think the first portion of that is doing the survey to assess where we are.
Right. And, and again, I'm sorry, I don't know if you answered this, but who's conducting this? Is this something we're doing in-house, or have we contracted this out?
It is something we're going to do in-house, and the HR department is conducting it.
Thank you. A great presentation. So thank you to everyone that contributed to it. I really like the idea of the town hall, and I know that the mayor and I were both on the receiving end of a constituent's email suggesting such. So to that end, I think it was, is helpful in kind of hopefully shaping whatever that town hall ends up looking like. I don't know, do we have kind of a sense of time in our minds? I mean, town hall in the traditional sense means that, you know, people can come together at City Hall and sit, you know, at tables or something. And obviously, during a pandemic, that's not a feasible solution. And certainly, I think that we would all benefit from this, you know, happening sooner than later. So is there a thought to doing something similar to what we're doing now, where we can see each other and talk, but we aren't physically in the same space?
Yeah, hi. Yes, it is recognizing that it is the time of COVID right now. It is going to be difficult to do something in person. I think that those are one of the factors that we're going to have to look into as well, and, and all the details, and what the actual program will be. Probably aiming towards post-summer time, to really put together a thoughtful program. So, so we're thinking around that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Sorry, I had more questions. One question I had for the chief, and I don't, I think he had missed this. One question that came up during the rally, the student-led rally, was the students asked if the Sammash Police Department had a policy that required officers to intervene if another officer was using excessive force. And I thought that was a really excellent question from the students, and I didn't know if you could address that.
Sure. The, so, our policy has stated, actually, I'll read you what we have here. Our policy in addressing that, to intervene, and let me see here, is promptly report, so our policy reads, promptly report to their immediate supervisor, knowledge or reasonable suspicion of criminal activity or violations of any provision of this chapter. That's referring to our General Orders Manual. Misconduct, failure to report a member's possible misconduct as required in another General Order, General Orders Manual section. And deputies shall not misuse the authority of their sworn position in any way or at any time. In other words, what it's saying is that we have a duty to report any violation. We've looked at the Eight Ways Can't Wait, and we've seen where they say to step and intervene. It's not good to just make that assumption. We concur with that, and we've already made that change, and that is sitting on the sheriff's desk to make sure that we add, and we need to intervene if we see any violation of our policies or anything that would be considered out of bounds, especially, for example, the things we were talking about with control tactics and those types of things. So we are going to make sure and add that, because it doesn't specifically have the word intervene. And again, we don't want to make any assumptions, so that's why we want to make sure and include that.
That's great. Is there anything, like, that we could do to help encourage the sheriff to adopt that new policy?
I, I think it's just a matter of her signing off on it. I think that, I think, I'm, I can't speak for the sheriff, but I believe that it's very positive. And literally, we have sent our policies up to Eight Ways Can't Wait, and they were literally, we have sent our policies up to Eight Ways Can't Wait, and they were great at working with us and speaking with us, and it was literally just minor fine-tuning, and that was one of them. And so, we've, all of the, our contract cities, the chiefs, and from what we understand, the sheriff is completely in favor of that. So, it was just getting that completed, making sure that it meets all of our manual sections and how we go through that process of vetting it, and that should happen quickly.
It's great to hear that you guys have been going through that. I know we've gotten some feedback from the community that they'd like to see us. And I think one thing that would be really helpful, where, you know, you possibly already have the policies, is to work on making sure that we can communicate to people what the policies are, so that everybody is aware, because I think that would really, would help and go a long way in helping people understand where that sits, right?
Right. And as you're aware, there were a lot of questions by a lot of people, and often it was the same question asked by a lot of different people. And so, trying to answer those individually and potentially being misconstrued, we've been trying really hard to make sure that we're going to be able to give a common message. So, as soon as we get that done, we can and will. And then, one thing that Sergeant Elias and I have been working on with others is to make sure that we're gonna put together some links on the Facebook page that will then be forwarded on throughout the city, so that people have the opportunity to go and look up all of our policies, look up the office's law enforcement oversight and what they do and how they work with us. So, a lot of different areas that people can take a look at, answer a lot of the questions that they have themselves, doing some research, and then if we need to find, tune anything or any of you want something specific, then we can address that as well.
Great, because I think that, yeah, I think that policies around the oversight and what involvement the community does or doesn't have or could have, I think would be key. And making sure that we understand what the policies are in terms of the consequences for misconduct and what happens when you have an officer that has any sort of misconduct before they're put back out on the street. I think we're starting to hear reports that some of the officers that are, you know, not behaving appropriately are not necessarily first-time offenders. And I think that it would be important to be able to understand that, and again, to work with you and partner with you to make sure that if those policies don't exist, that we partner with the King County Sheriff's Office and make sure those are implemented.
I appreciate that. And again, we, every complaint that comes in, no matter how minor, and even if it's just a subjective view of someone, that doesn't apply, it's still investigated. And the more serious complaints, and our manual is broken down into red, yellow, and green, so red is the most serious, and those complaints go on up, they're investigated, they come back, they're reviewed, make sure it was complete. Ultimately, there's recommendations and findings, there's a process. We look at how it applies and whether or not they've had previous history and those types of things. And then there's an administrative review board where those are, again, all discussed, and things can change, again, more severe penalties or less. And again, at that point, we have legal prosecutor's office and risk management all involved, that King County, not King County Sheriff, King County Risk Management involved. And then, once that's all said and done, and still sent to OLEO for certification, and they can send it back and still ask for more. So, it's a very thorough process, especially when it's a more serious event.
Excellent. Well, thanks for the information. I think it'll be, again, I think it'll be interesting. I think a big theme that I'm hearing repeatedly are the calls for understanding where the community oversight comes in. I, you know, obviously, a very thorough process that you walked us through, but I didn't hear the community involved in any of that, and I think that's what people might be asking for as well. So, it'll be interesting to know if you could keep us abreast if there are discussions around that, or if that's something we need to be lobbying for on behalf of our constituents as well.
So, the OLEO is, does have appointed people there, and that is a great segue to allow for citizens to discuss issues or concerns, whether it's about a specific complaint and/or how it's done. So, they can have a lot of input that way.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Train?
So, quick follow-up question. So, lead is, is that for all? Is that the overriding kind of philosophy?
So, it, yeah, it was training that was begun, like I said, back in 2012, and it's, again, it's how we want to treat people. And again, it's about listening and explaining with equity and dignity, so that that interaction is positive. We have the best interaction possible to get the information or, you know, a positive result at the end of that interaction. So, we look at that, again, it continues to be a part of everything that we do and all of our training. And like I said, if, during some of our disciplinary actions or discussions, oftentimes, lead is one of the areas that we look at as to whether or not that was followed in the interaction where we have a complaint.
So, in the interaction that you, that officers have with mentally ill, the training that's being provided is CIT, correct?
Correct.
And so, in that training, here's where I'm curious, because welcome to what I do when I'm not on council, is what is, what's the policy for hands-on? What's in your training?
So, we do scenario-based training that, where we will look at, for example, somebody in a mental, in a crisis situation. And it could be-
Right.
-mental health, it could be drugs, I mean, so, and then, in that base, in that training, we're trying to, again, it's all-encompassing. We're talking about de-escalation. So, the last thing we want to do is do hands-on. We're trying to, again-
Thank you.
-create space, create time, bring in other resources. Hands-on is a last resort. Sometimes, we don't have a choice. Sometimes, they engage us. And then, it's about control tactics, and then that's when we get into the assessment, reassess, and try to back off and make sure that there's no harm to anybody.
Thank you. That's the same training I do. Last resort, and when hands do go on, it's for the safety of everyone.
Yes.
And that's what you guys are trained in doing. So, thank you very much for all your work. I know it's tough.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Well, great presentation. And you guys do an outstanding job. Okay, she does an outstanding job.
Mayor? Is it possible, oh, sorry, is it possible for me to make a recommendation? I think it was a year, year and a half ago, at one of the pre-pick meetings, the city of Renton talked a lot about the, some of the work that they did to improve diversity in their hiring and on their boards and commissions. And I was wondering if that was something that we could ask to be investigated as part of the diversity and inclusion program. Again, one of the simplest things that they did was, they just, when any application was submitted, the names were excluded. And they found, I'd have to go back and quote the statistic, but I recall it being something like a 40% increase in the number of diverse candidates that were invited in for an interview, simply by not including the name on the resume and just reviewing it based on the criteria and the qualification. So, I'm wondering if we could ask that some of that information be included in our DZ program, or at least be considered.
Actually, maybe can we ask that we, try to find that study for us? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, we have half a chance of doing this on time. Okay, next is rules of procedure. And I have a couple of notes here. One, okay, so, I'll have to look here. Yes, I'm gonna turn those over to Mr. Sugg for a moment.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst, once again. This item was requested by Mayor Moran. She is proposing a number of amendments to the council's Rules of Procedure. The more significant changes were to three sections to the council's rules. The first was Section 2.7.2, which clarifies when a council member may use the role or title. The second major change was Section 3.4.4, which implements a two-minute speaking limit per council member per round of discussion. And the third major change was Section 4.1.3, which makes changes to how the agenda items get added to a finalized agenda. And I just want to note, and this may have been one of the mayor's notes as well, that we received advice from our city attorney earlier this week that we may want to revise the proposed language to Section 2.7.2. And before we turn it back over to the mayor for council discussion, I'd like to allow our city attorney, Lisa, the opportunity to comment on that, and I can just pull up Lisa's proposed changes to 2.7.2.
Thank you, Mike. Right, so the way 2.7.2 was originally written, it would have prohibited a council member from using her or his role or title to discuss any matter, excuse me, to further position agenda or mediate public policy. And in thinking about how this was originally written, it seems to create a risk of impairing the council member's First Amendment rights to speak on any matter. So, for example, the way it originally written, it could arguably prohibit a council member from stating, "I am in favor of growth," or "I am against growth," or something quite benign like that. So, I've changed that language to read that the role or, the title role of council member should not be used to serve, to serve as a mediator between contracted or non-contracted staff and the council, without the council having taken a formal position on the subject matter. For purposes herein, serve as a mediator shall mean, by way of illustration and not limitation, committing the contracted or non-contracted staff to meet with members of the public without the city manager's knowledge and without council having taken a position on the matter. Further, council members should not sign petitions or the like using their title unless council has taken a formal position on the topic. I think this revision narrows the prohibition as stated and continues to allow council members to exercise their First Amendment privilege on stating what their position is on any particular given agenda item or policy matter. And I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Thank you, Lisa. That's very helpful. That was all I had for my introduction. I will now hand it back over to the mayor, and I can also pull up a copy of the amended rules if we would like to discuss any section in particular.
Okay, so, the first one, which is 2.7.2, is that correct? Let's go one by one.
Yep.
Okay, 2.4. Oh, this one is, this one was based on adding things at the meeting. So, the reasoning behind this is because when we add things at the beginning of the meeting, we don't have the staff there to answer it. So, it's really unfair to staff to, when something comes up and it's thrown on at the agenda, they're not here to answer it, nobody's prepared, and it's, you know, we're throwing something on to discuss that, staff has no way, we're kind of blindsiding them. And that's what continues to happen to them. So, that was why that was added. Oh. Why don't you just? Oh. Oh, Kristi, why don't you, I'm sorry, I had the wrong one. So, Kristi, you wanna work out, do you want to take this one? Yeah, I don't see it either. You're muted.
Sorry. I thought Pam was first, but that was probably from the last.
Yeah, well, I wanted you to speak to this since this was one that came from you.
No, it didn't come from me, but I did make some changes here. I am trying to see, I'm trying to look back and forth at what the suggestion changes that I sent to you. Or now I gotta scroll back up, because I was over in the section that I'm really focused in, so sorry, information sharing. Is that where we're at? Yeah. So, I didn't, I don't know that I made many changes here, Karen, if any. I can't see. I don't think I added anything here, Karen. This isn't me.
Okay.
This is you.
Okay, move on to the next one.
There's other people in the queue, though, I think, maybe on this.
Uh, Jason, Councilmember Ritchie?
So, are we taking these one by one, or can I address my concerns now?
Yeah, we're taking one by one.
Okay. On the 2.4, agenda items to be added at a meeting. So, what I'm, what I'm kind of concerned about is just, I mean, Mayor, I appreciate that there's a concern about staff or not having the presentations available, or not having the information available. For me, the reason why this is a bad idea, and kind of more to my point from our vote this evening about, you know, extending a contract to the city manager, was we don't have public involvement. We don't have any public notice. So, I would support 2.4, 2.4, yes, for staff, but more importantly, for our roles as city councilmembers, so that we're providing public notice to the, you know, public notice, so that the, our constituents can see what's on the agenda. And I have a concern that things are coming out Friday afternoon, you know, anyway, so that seems kind of late anyway. But, in as much as we can provide more notice and not have things added, you know, way late in the evening on council day, then I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
I don't think that's what this particular one is. This one is saying that if we have contact with anyone in the community and we discuss possibly adding an agenda item to a meeting, that we need to somehow report that back to the council? Is that what this is? And I'm not arguing with it, I'm just saying that I don't think anybody's been doing any of this 2.4 anyway. So, like, I haven't seen any notifications from any council members that they've had any contact with residents and other stakeholders on matters about which a council member reasonably believes the other council member should be apprised. I mean, I sent one, it was not well-received, but I haven't received any emails from other council members talking about this, so maybe we should clarify what this rule is in general and then what specifically the addition is.
So, I think that, if I can, I think the rule is that if you have contacts with other parties, you're supposed to email. Most of the time, I don't think most of us have contact with opposing parties in litigation. If you-
But there's no litigation.
Then you would need to report it. I think if you've talked to a legislator, then you should be reporting that back to council. If you, you know, I mean, not in a casual conversation, obviously, but if you're- If you, you know, I mean, not in a casual conversation, obviously, but if you're talking to a legislator and it has something to do with, you know, city business, that should be reported back to the council. If those are not being reported back to the council, that's a problem, in my opinion, because the full council deserves to have an understanding of those conversations that are transpiring on city business. I think what I see here in the ad by the mayor, agenda items to be added at a meeting, is that if you have an intention of adding an item to the agenda, and you've discussed that with someone else, but not your fellow council members, it should be brought to the fellow council member's attention. That's how I read it, and I'm supportive of that.
I'm not saying I'm not supportive of it, I'm just saying that the way the rule reads right now is it says, "Council members should place on the record all contacts with city residents and other stakeholders on matters about which a council member reasonably believes the other council members should be apprised." And so I'm not arguing with it, I'm just saying that I've never received an email from, I won't say never, because that might be harsh, but I can't recall, and so if we are receiving any, it must be a very low number, close to zero, such emails sharing with all of council that any such interactions have happened, which, you know, fall under any of these categories. So I'm not arguing with it, I'm just saying maybe we need to clarify how this should happen before we start adding more things to it, because I'm just not seeing that. And I'm guessing that people are, in fact, having discussions with other legislators and stakeholders with city business and matters of similar sensitivity.
I think when, if I can, just as an example, oftentimes, conversations are had over email, and oftentimes, a, an individual will email the full council, and instead of just hitting reply to that person and cutting out the rest of the council, a reply all is a more appropriate use of that tool. I think we did just have a few instances where I think an individual emailed us all individually, and we didn't all know, and David Pyle was nice enough to kind of loop us all in, that we were all getting hit with the same thing, instead of hitting a reply all. But it is nice to kind of be in the know as a council member when reply all is used, as opposed to just reply.
Again, I'm not arguing against this. I would say that I'm arguing that, yes, we need way more of this, but I'd like to understand how we're going to make sure this is happening from all the council members to be sharing this information. And I would actually recommend that we expand it to say, "conversations with staff," that would lead to such things, so that we aren't being blindsided on the day of a meeting, or even on a Friday night. I mean, to get hundreds of pages of documents on Friday night and not know what is coming, I think that, I think I'd like to see that expanded to make sure we're having even more communications. And making sure we're sharing that information with all of staff, I mean, all of council.
Agreed. I think one thing that we talked about at the agenda meeting on Monday was the reinsertion of the long-term calendar back into our packet. It's something that we used to get, so we knew what was coming up on the agenda, rather than waiting until 7:00 PM when the packet gets released on Friday.
Right.
That way, we know what's coming, that, yes, that, Karen's holding it up right there. So that, my understanding is that our city manager has agreed that that absolutely should be in our packet, and he's going to make sure that that happens going forward. So that should help to know what topics we're going to be covering.
But I would say even beyond that, right, like, there are obviously conversations that are happening that will have large impacts, and that may lead to agenda items that aren't residents. I guess it would fall under the other stakeholders that is not being shared with all of council, and I think it would be great if that happened.
Can't disagree with you.
I would say, too, that one of the processes that we had last year was that when someone updated the long-term calendar, we actually got notified, because otherwise, you have to kind of go fishing for it. It's like, you gotta go check it every day and, like, have a copy of it and see what changed. And so I would love to see that happen as well, that if there's something that gets added to or removed from, that we get a notification.
Yeah, there was that link, I do remember that as well. I think Mike Sugg maybe even set it up. Hey, you can point to them, Karen.
Yeah. Mike Sugg's looking at me, it's just the link to the calendar.
I think that was the link to the calendar that the deputy mayor, or, excuse me, that the mayor was just showing on her screen there. That, that, that's all done in Google Docs, and it's still open and available to council members, so maybe it's just a matter of us resharing that link with the full council.
Is there a way to push notifications when it gets updated?
You know, I knew that when we first set it up, I have to relook into it. I know there is a way to do it, I just need to take another look at that, and I can send out instructions if there is a way for council to get those notifications.
Yeah, I wasn't getting it, so.
Yeah, no, not happening.
Sorry, if I can add another point there. I think part of the way that we were helping council members track, and staff, for that matter, track what was being added to the calendar was by using the track changes function in the Google Doc. So every week, you know, we would add, staff would add items to the calendar throughout the week, we would stop adding items on Friday, I believe it was, allow the council members to go in over the weekend and review the track changes that occurred over the previous week, and then on Monday of the next week, staff would accept the track changes from the previous week and kind of start over. I think that was kind of the interim solution, but let me look into the notifications as well.
That would be awesome. And I guess it's unrelated, but we've kind of dabbled in it. What has happened to our getting information before Friday night? So that we have a more advanced notification and time to review the materials and ask questions in advance? I think 7:00 on a Friday night to get, some of these have been over 400 pages long, these packets.
Okay, before I can let anybody answer that, we need to extend.
Move to extend to 11:30.
Second.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor of extending, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Next one, and it wasn't me this time. All right, all right, now, question.
To Pam's question, I think the frustration is warranted and noted. This last week, all these weeks, it's been lagging along, trying to figure out what we could fit in with dealing with COVID, normal routine, COVID-related. This past week was further compounded by a tremendous number of hours and process with outside counsel, the attorney's office, and staff in dealing with how to package, review the issues for the Jaren matter and for the TMP. And it was a tremendous amount of work, and with changes and meetings leading up to, and even including with our outside consultants on Friday afternoon, trying to find times when everybody could get together and process all of that. And we do apologize, I know there was a tremendous amount of information, and it was way late getting out, and we even paid overtime to staff because of our inability to process it timely and get it out. And I hope we don't see that again.
So Karen, quick question. If we were going to go section by section, do you want to try and pass each section with an individual motion and then bundle it together at the end, so that we're not dealing with amendments after amendment after amendment?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I move that we adopt 2.4.
Second.
Okay, discussion, well, we've had discussions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0, moving on. Okay, so this is the 2.7.2, so this is the change with the one that was made, and I'm going to read. Yes, pull up Lisa's.
Did we lose Karen?
Oh, sorry, hang on. I gotta get my back, my box back up here. Okay, now, I don't know who was last in the queue here. Okay, did somebody have a comment or a question? Oh, hang on. I can't see hands, I'm sorry, my little queue box is right in front of three boxes, so. I can't see both. Okay, so, Councilmember Ritchie, do you have a comment?
Yep, well, question on 2.7.1, right? That one?
No.
No, that's, no.
Oh.
2.7.2. 2.7.1 didn't change, it just had to add the 2.7.1 because we added a 2.7.2.
Yeah.
There was no.
Well, okay, all right, there was, okay, then I'll move on to 2.7.2. I guess it's part of the same thing, it's, so frequently, I guess this is more a question from the legal folks, frequently, council members, at least some council members, I don't know, speaking for myself, are asked to endorse political campaigns, or propositions, or referenda, or that kind of thing, that typically would not come before the council in terms of, you know, a discussion. So does this then say that we're not allowed to take a position on an election, or a proposition, or referenda, or an election of an individual?
Well, keep in mind that the prohibition against use of city resources in a support or against a campaign or proposition would prohibit you from doing that on city time or using city resources, anyway. So this isn't intended to change that state law in any way, it still remains the way that it was. This is intended to prevent a council member from committing staff resources to hold a conference or a town hall meeting or something like that without having first sought council approval and the city manager's input.
Okay, so maybe I need to better understand, councils should not use their role as, or title, as a council, to further any petition, any position, agenda, or to mediate a public policy in any way without the council having, so a position, so I can't, I mean.
That's not the way that it's presented, written. You're, you need to look at the one that's on the screen.
To serve as a mediator between contracted or non-contracted staff and the council without, okay, without the council having, okay, for purposes herein, "service mediator" means the use of the situation, not eliminating committing to contracted staff. All right, cool, thank you.
My turn, Mayor.
Okay, who had a question? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, actually, it's the last sentence, "The further council member shall not sign petitions or the like using their titles unless the council has taken a formal, formal position on the topic." In the past, we've been able to do that by stating that that was title only, so as to clarify that it was not representing the city council. Is that, I mean, that seems like a perfectly fine policy to have.
There's no change to that, this is, the only change is in red.
Ah, okay. I still think it's a bad idea, like, I don't know why we wouldn't do what we've done in the past. I guess, I guess I have to question, like, can we really prevent, I mean, council member is our title that we got as an elected official, and if we wanted to sign something, can we really limit that ability to do so?
I assume that's a question for legal.
I assume that is, yes.
Well, I think that you would have to be pretty careful that you're speaking for yourself and not as a body. So as long as you're saying, you're, you know, this is, I support this in my role as a council member, and, you know, it is written fairly broadly, so I don't know if I can enumerate each and every possible scenario for you, but I think that the key would be to clarify that you're, you're speaking for yourself as a council member, not as, not as a representative of the entire body.
It would be great to get legal clarification on that, because I do think that we are allowed as council members to sign on and stuff and to use our earned title to do so. So it'd be great to maybe get that clarification, so we can all make sure we are doing the right thing.
Yeah, I think clarification on that would be good.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a good idea for me to try to create that on the dais.
Oh, no, no, I don't think we were, sorry. No, just if you can get that back to us, that would, that seems completely reasonable.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
One thing you mentioned, Lisa, that I don't see written here, was you made a comment about, something about town halls, and I don't know what that has to do with anything or what you meant by that.
I was just trying to come up with an example that this language would intend to try to prevent, and this is just complete hypothetical, this hasn't happened, but just take this as an example. Suppose that one council member goes to the League of Female Voter, or League of Women Voters, and says, "Hey, I'd like you to come and speak to us at a council meeting, or I'd like you to come and address the planning commissioner, I'd like you to come and address the, the department directors." I mean, that would be an inappropriate kind of attempt to set up some kind of dialogue between two groups, that the city council would be more appropriately in its role as a body to do that.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, I appreciate the clarification there, because I wasn't, I wasn't totally tracking that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm in the queue. I'm in the.
Okay, now I'm gonna miss three of you because I'm putting the queue down. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So first, to address Councilmember Ritchie's first concern, which I think we eliminated, but just for everyone's verification, typically, in the scenario that he presented where you are going to endorse a candidate, for example, typically, what we've seen is that the title of the person endorsing is used for identification purposes only, that tagline always comes with that. And then, as far as petitions go, I, you know, Lisa's gonna look a little bit more into that, but, you know, I think it really does depend on the nature of the petition. I don't know any petitions that we would be signing onto as using our title. It doesn't prevent any of us from signing a petition, but if you're using your title with a position, there's probably some political nature to it, and thereby, I think Lisa's, you know, trying to hammer out, they're not, that it ensures a council position when signing such or not, I think that's kind of what we're trying to net out here with it.
Agreed, and I might add that, you know, for example, the Target in, down in Gilman, is where my family shops when we go to Target, and there's always petition gatherers outside of Target, particularly on anti-firearm campaigns, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So I think it's safe to say that if you were asked to sign a petition by one of those petition gatherers, while you're shopping at Target that day, you probably wouldn't put council member Pam Stewart, you would probably just put your name and address. But if it's a position that the city council wants to take a position on, you would do that as a body during a public meeting where both sides would be given an equal opportunity to comment as the state law requires. to comment as the state law requires.
Lisa, if I may, one, one example I can think of is that oftentimes we work with other elected officials in other jurisdictions on issues, right, that are important to us, and we may, I don't know, write a letter to a state legislator, for example, as a group of city council members. I think it would be important to understand, you know, how we can still sign on to that with our title, and clarify that it is my personal position, but not that of the council, but I still get to use my title.
Yeah, and I think that's acceptable, if what you're doing is sending a letter, and you'd like to use your title, and I think if you're clarifying that you're sending it in your role as an individual council member, not as representing the entire body, that would take care of that.
Terrific.
Okay, I don't see.
I move to approve. I move to approve 2.7.2 as corrected.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a.
Oh, we lost you, Karen. I'm you.
Sorry, okay, we've had a first, we have a second, and we've had, sorry, thank you, tons of discussions, so all those in favor, raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, what's our next one? Oh, speaking time limits. Okay, so this was brought up because by the time, this has, this is not for study sessions, first of all. This is just at our meetings. And this is for, to try so we're not here at 11:30 at night. This is to try to get a handle on, by the time we have things that come here at night, we've had them before, we've had them in work-study sessions, by the time they come here at night, we've, we've got to get a better hold on, you know, you should have formed questions. If, if, like our last one, clearly was not ready to be done tonight, we had too long of questions, and so it needed to be polled. So, if, if it's taking more than two minutes, and we're two minutes around, two minutes, two minutes per person, and there was two rounds, it's clearly not ready to be on the agenda, it needs to be polled. And so that's what this was about. Somebody said two minutes is too short. I'm totally good, I could go to three minutes. What I'm trying to do is to keep it from being where we're here at 11:30 at night. Okay, comments?
I think I'm in the person in the queue.
Councilmember Richie.
No, no.
Oh.
You got two other.
Well, if I do.
Mal Chau's first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kristi.
Thanks. So, I had made some suggestions on this. Karen sent me the document, and I, I did a little bit of markup, and this, this is one that I feel pretty passionately about, is that two minutes for two rounds is just simply not enough, and the example I use is, please tell me about level of service and be overseen in two minutes. Go. Not going to happen. We need more time to speak. I went out to Jurassic Parliament, which is Ann McFarland's site, and she has a blog post on setting time limits for board members when speaking. She says, "If you have adopted Robert's Rules of Order, you already have a time limit for members of your board or council when speaking, ten minutes per speech. Stop, because that's way too much." But, she says, "In our view, this is too long." Totally agree. We recommend adopting a time limit of five minutes per speech, and that is what my suggestion was, and that is what I would propose, that amendment, that you can speak for five minutes twice, that gives you a total of ten minutes of talking on any given item, which hopefully should be plenty.
Second.
Oh, that's my amendment to that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Slow down, I got questions.
Wait, so five minutes?
I made an amendment, second to the, I've made an amendment to it.
So.
We don't have a motion yet.
She just made a motion, she moved it from five and five, for two rounds.
I'm amending what, the language here from two to five minutes, so you get to, you can talk for a total of ten minutes.
Second.
I still have questions. That's fine, they just have to be on the amendment.
Councilmember Stewart.
On the amendment. No, that's fine, I, it's totally fine. Is it okay to go?
Sure.
Okay, so, so, Mayor, I really liked the way you described this rule, but what you described and what's written are not the same. And Deputy Mayor, I appreciate that two minutes is not enough, I think five minutes is fine if it's just expressing an opinion. I have concerns when it comes to questions, how does that work? And, and like, for things where we've had the twos and threes beforehand, that might be fine, but we've had a number of items on the agenda tonight that I didn't see until Friday night. I never had them, I never had an opportunity to ask questions, so does this count when we're asking questions, or only when we're speaking on something?
When you're speaking on something.
So I think we need to clarify that.
That it's when there is a motion.
But even, like, even now, you made the motion, and I have questions, so am I limited by five minutes, and does that include the answers, or just the part where I'm asking the questions?
Now, now that there is a motion on the floor, you have five minutes.
So if somebody answers my question, and it takes them a really long time, that's part of my five minutes.
I think that's up to the body to decide whether that's you talking, or if that's someone answering the question. And the body, I mean, the body meeting I'm talking about right now, we're deciding that right now, I think if we want to be specific, then we should be specific. I think what the mayor is attempting to avoid here is the scenario where, you know, ten minutes later, we're still on the first person talking, and then we're adjourning our meetings at 11:45 a.m.
I totally, I totally agree. I'm, I'm all for making the meetings more efficient. I just want to make sure that we aren't cutting off the ability to get questions answered, and then expecting people to take a vote, because I think that is not a good plan. So, could I amend, could I add another amendment? Because actually, I think there was only really the first motion. I would like to say that it's, it would be limited to speaking on a topic and not questions, and it would, yeah, I think if we did that, that would be fine, because as long as we could ask questions, I don't know that we then have to qualify it further with whether it's a new topic or one we've had before.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Can I speak to that amendment, please?
Councilmember Trine? And then. Okay, I can't, I'm not, you're not even in, I can't see your face, and you're not in my chat box, I don't even know where he is.
I give the floor to Councilmember Ross.
I, I'm just looking, I'm not sure, another amendment without passing the first amendment, but I'll put that aside for now. I, I, what Councilmember Stewart is on to something, maybe we just simply have the first round for questions only. Once we clear questions only, then we go to a comment round. That, I've seen boards do that all the time, and it really is effective, because you clear the questions, you don't have to bifurcate the content that's answering the question versus what your, our statements on the issue.
Second. Absolutely.
So we're getting, we're getting too many amendments here, maybe Councilmember Stewart can rephrase her. Because I will, I'll second if she wants to restate it.
Okay, all right, so, for us here at City Hall, we can't hear, we didn't hear any of that, so, because you guys were all chit-chatting, and everybody's, you're all.
Vote it, we're all done.
So let us know what that was, for the record.
Councilmember Stewart, would you hear what Chris, what Councilmember Ross said?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Are you willing to restate your amendment?
I'm thinking about it. I, I think what we can do is restate and say that the time limit only applies to commentary and not to questions. I think, is that an answer, summary, Councilmember Ross?
He had, had the first round only be questions, so if you have a question, you get to ask it, and there's not a time limit, right, Chris? Am I summarizing this correctly?
I want to just do one round.
When all the questions are cleared to queue, then you start your timer on your five minutes of trying to convince the call of council members to see it the way you do.
I, I, how about if we did it this way, Councilmember Ross? I like what you're saying, that, that the, the initial rounds, and the reason I say that is because oftentimes, someone will ask the question, and then that leaves someone else to ask another question. So, I don't know that we should limit it to one round of questions, so it's.
Coming up on 11:25, folks.
I, I, I don't intend to limit to one round, because we address all questions first.
There we go. Yes, so that's what I was going to suggest, so I, I'm happy to modify my amendment to say that, that the, what would it be, that we limit the, actually, we might have already addressed it, because it says speak and debate, which doesn't really address questions.
It does, if you speak and debate, but that's not what the language here says, I don't think.
Seeing as it changes.
Debate, debate would be, but yes, you're right.
So are we already covered, because this doesn't really cover questions?
But I like Councilmember Ross's idea of making sure that we clear the queue on questions first, because I, so many times, we're in the middle of debating a motion, like we are right now, and we're asking questions, and we shouldn't be.
So maybe we could say that council members may speak and debate twice on any topic for no more than five minutes each round, only after questions have been answered, all questions have been answered. Does that? I'm writing it on the fly here, but.
Councilmember Ross, did that cover yours?
I, I, I think it does, it, it, yeah, it's essentially saying the same thing, we're just clearing the queue on the questions, and then it likely will reduce the number, the, the volume of debate, because I find many times, questions are answered, they say, oh, never mind, I don't want to, I don't need to talk, or I need to talk minimally. So, yeah, as long as we address the questions first, then go into debate if left any debate necessary.
And when we say, and it's, it's a maximum of five minutes per round, is that correct?
Yep.
Per person.
Okay, so it would be, it would be clear the questions first, and then you can speak twice during debate for no more, more than five minutes per, per round.
Yes, and Roberts, and, and I think that's important to note, per round.
Okay, folks, it's, it's almost 11:30, do we want to bring this back next week?
No.
Let's finish it.
Move to extend five minutes.
Second.
Okay, we're going to need probably 20 minutes, does somebody want to make the extension?
I move to extend five minutes.
And it got a second, so we've got a motion on the floor.
We got to vote on it.
Karen, what else is there?
The rest of the agenda, we've got another one of these, it's going to take time, and then.
All right, I will modify my motion for an additional.
And I've just been told that our city manager needs our attention too, so, okay.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, opposed?
Too late, man. No good decisions get made in this hour.
All right, finish it up, you two, let's go. I think we're, I think it's.
I think we have a motion on the floor, yeah?
Okay, well, somebody tell me what this motion was.
Well, Councilmember Stewart was amending it, so.
So I amended the five minutes per round rule to say that first, clear all, we have initial question rounds with no limitations, about that.
No more questions during debate.
After questions are cleared.
You can't have a question, it just counts towards your five minutes, right?
Questions aren't necessarily, if you've already cleared the queue of questions, if you're still asking questions during debate, you're no longer debating, you're asking questions, there's a difference.
Okay, so that's the amendment. Councilmember Ross, did you want to second that?
Second it.
That was, it was kind of your idea.
We have a first, and we have a second, would you please repeat your motion?
So the motion is to state that the debate time limit rounds will not go into effect until all questions have been cleared.
And change two minutes to five.
It's an amendment, just to be clear.
And we're changing two minutes to five minutes in this amendment.
Are we doing this all as one, or?
Okay, we'll do that part, I guess, and then we'll.
Do this all as one, Kristi?
Yeah, I can just whip my original motion.
All right. All right, we have first and a second, although we've had enough discussion, so, all those in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Who's, okay. So how many are ayes there? We've got, one, two, three, four. I think we're a four-two.
Chris would be in there for five-two.
Oh, Chris is in there? I can't see Chris, okay, five-two.
Where are the two noes?
That would be myself and Mr. Gamblin.
Oh, sorry. Are we doing a queue or no?
I think.
For the next one? Nope, for this one. That one's over. I had a question on the first one, I'm on the queue, I don't know what else I've got to do.
You know what, I can't read the queue and see the hands, we're going to, okay, here's the deal, guys, you're going to pick one or the other, because I can't do both, so.
We've moved, we've passed this, we've moved on, so.
Well, there were questions in the queue, though, right? I mean, I'm not, I voted in favor, but I had a question. I'm sorry, I have a queue right there, I'm next to my name.
Okay, so. What is your question?
Who are you addressing?
Mr. Richie.
Okay. I was going to suggest that we, after the end of the two five-minute rounds for a total of 10 minutes of comment, that we automatically, if we don't move to a motion to vote, that we table the motion. I mean, if, if we've reached the end of the debate, we've had our questions asked, we've answered, what do we do at the end of that? I mean, I think that's where we would automatically move to a table, right? If at the end of the, if at the end of the debate, we don't have a move to vote, then we move to table automatically. We don't do that, we kind of leave things open-ended too frequently, in my opinion, so, that at the end of it, my, my request is that we consider a motion to move to table the motion at the end of the round, the two, 10-minute rounds, the two five-minute rounds.
I'll second that.
So if you haven't spent an hour on it. Okay.
Well, we will definitely, I mean, seven times five, I mean.
Yep, if, basically, if you haven't, if you haven't decided something in over an hour, I agree with that, 70 minutes, you're really not going to.
That's all I'm trying to do.
I'm in the queue.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Up.
I'm on, I'm in the queue.
Deputy Mayor. Well, you know.
There's two options at the end of this debate. If we've limited everyone to speaking, and everyone has used up all of their rounds or time, you either call the question, or you table it. So it's one or the other, but it's not necessarily just tabling it.
Automatic.
Question, too.
Yeah, I said that, yeah, I, I said if there isn't, in lieu of a motion to, to, to vote, or to, to, a motion to, to move forward or move to vote, then it gets tabled.
Conclusion, because then nobody else is, you can't talk about it anymore.
So, well, but I think when you table it, you, you actually make it be something, right? Like we table it to a date certain and then it just doesn't linger out there.
So, right, but you, you have.
I'm just saying we should try to put a conclusion on these things. We either move to vote or we, on a up or down on it, or it gets tabled until we're ready to, to move it up or down.
I agree, I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay, guys, what's the pleasure? Do we move on or do you want to go back?
Vote. Vote.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I can't see Councilmember Ross, so.
I'm an aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next one. Deputy Mayor.
Yep, that, that one was definitely me. Just because we're not at a dais anymore and I think it's important that we're all programmed into what's going on and not on another device. Obviously, we have multiple devices going on. I have this, this is functioning as my camera and this is functioning as my packet, but I'm not on my cellphone and I'm not surfing on Amazon on, you know, that's, that's kind of the point. That's it.
I, I motion that we pass three point, uh, three point four point five is written, or improvised.
Second.
I don't mean to be difficult, but the way it's written, Kristi, you're in violation because you're using something other than your city provided iPad.
No, I'm not. I'm on a city-issued laptop right here. This camera is a city-issued laptop and right over here is my city-issued iPad.
Yep, yep.
But it doesn't say a city-issued i, laptop. It says city-issued iPad.
Okay, then let's, it says, okay, then let's change it to say city, city-issued devices.
Yes.
So we have to get a city-issued device for our camera?
That's what. Offering laptops to everybody so that you could have a city-issued laptop.
Okay, I just, I didn't accept that. I will go back and ask for one. It's fine, I just didn't know it had to be a city-issued camera.
Melanie Anderson has them.
I know, I just. Want a 43rd device in my house.
Me neither.
Okay, you guys, it is 11:30, it's 11:38. So I'm going to suggest that we table the rest of these for the next, uh, next week.
We have a motion on the table, don't we?
Yes, we do. Got to vote on it.
Of course we do. So we have a motion on the table. Who was our first?
Councilmember Ross.
Who's the second?
Can't remember.
I'll be the second, I don't, you know.
Okay, I'm going to amend it, I'm going to make an amendment so that it says city-issued device, provided. We have to, that's what we just discussed.
A second.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment. The amendment is to, on city-issued device. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Going back to the original amendment. Motion?
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Aye.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Move to table the rest of this until next week.
Thank you.
Second.
This is adjourned.
Okay, no, we still have to, we have to hear from our city manager on something and, that's something else. All right.
Mayor members of council, under city manager's report, I've got an important item discussed with the city attorney's office, so let me just review this issue. On January 31st, 2020, the city executed a statutory warranty deed to acquire a portion of the property along Issaquah Falls City Road that needed, that was needed for the Issaquah Falls City Road construction project. The property is owned by the estate of Dorina Cracium. The city placed $50,560 in escrow and awaited clothing instructions. Over the past 18 months, changes in personnel and confusion over the number of liens recorded against the property have resulted in the sale remaining unclosed as of this writing. Some responsibility for the delay is ours and the escrow company, First American, bears some responsibility as well. What we've learned over the past few weeks is that the liens on the property total $56,368.09, which is $5,718.09 over the amount the city paid in escrow. The liens must be released in order for the property to close. The three liens recorded against the property include an attorney's lien in the amounts of $6,200, a mortgage lien in the amount of $35,000, and an IRS lien in the amount of $15,168.09 for a total of $56,368.09. First American will satisfy the attorney's lien in the amount of $6,200, which will leave $44,450 remaining in escrow. Next, First American will contact both the IRS and the mortgage lender to determine if both entities agree to a partial release. Partial release of both liens will result in the proceeds of the sale going to the property owner's estate and the liens currently recorded on the property the city is acquiring will be transferred to the other portion of the Cracium property to be sold. The transaction will close and the city will enjoy clear title to the property. If either the IRS or the mortgage lender does not agree to a partial release, escrow contains funds to satisfy either or both of the liens. The lien holder not agreeing to a partial release will be paid out of escrow. The lien will be removed and the property will close. The city receiving clear title. The entity agreeing to the partial release will record its lien on that portion of the property to be sold in the future. The final possible scenario is that neither the IRS nor the mortgage lender agree to a partial release. If this occurs, the city manager requests your permission to increase the amount of the escrow by $5,718.08 so that the property can close and the city obtain clear title. The city will record a lien in the amount of $5,718.09 on that portion of the Cracium property to be sold in the future. Do I have your permission to increase the amount in escrow with First American in the amount of $5,718.09 if necessary to close? A motion is not necessary, but it, but although it would do no harm in clarifying the issue. So could I?
Don't move.
Make a motion?
I, yeah, what Jason said, I second it.
Okay, we got a first, what do we have a second? Pam's first, Jason's second. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, looks like seven up.
Thank you very much and Lisa will make note of it and we'll get that transaction done.
Okay, we also have council reports.
Please just reading them, please, since they're written unless you haven't provided a written one. You're muted, Karen. You're on mute.
We have council reports. Did anybody have anything on theirs that needed to point out within their council report?
Just read them.
Okay, all right, then we have one last executive session that we have got five minutes for, so we'll go into that. And there will be, so we'll have to come back, yeah, we'll have to come back, so figure five minutes. We better give ourselves 10. 10 minutes.
12.
RCW.
Um, all right, so what, what time do we have? Did we extend till? Okay, okay, so I think 11:50. All right, so we probably better give ourselves till midnight, so. A motion to extend to midnight?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, RCW.
Opposed? Okay, so we are going into executive session and I have to read this. We're going into executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101G.
Everybody here?
Yep, everybody's here.
Okay, could I make a motion that the Mayor Moran adopts the agreed-upon contract to, or ratifies the agreed-upon contract to hire Dave Rudat as our city manager?
I second that.
Okay. Uh, 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 oh. Kristi can't hear anything, she's, we can't hear Kristi. Okay. Okay, I'm going to say.
Motion made.
She moved.
She's second.
On again.
Okay, she's going to try to come back, I think.
Yeah.
Is that better, Kristi?
Flip your, um, your speaker drop-down on the bottom. You can hear me.
She can write, yes. I can't hear. Yeah, well. I don't know why she couldn't. Motion is, uh-oh.
To ratify.
All right, so Dave's going to try to get her on the phone. And. Okay, well, power to call me here, I have mine. Call me, call me, call me, call me, call me, Kristi, call me, call me, call me, call me.
This is so.
Oh, what's the deal? Okay.
Yes, I'm going to put you on speakerphone.
All right, all right, she's on our speaker. All right, Kristi, you on?
Yeah.
All right, okay, so, repeat your motion.
Motion to instruct Mayor Moran to ratify the agreement to execute the contract to hire Mr. Rudat as city manager.
As adopted.
Amended.
Okay, it was, it was adopted, no changes. We made. Correct. All right, and seconded by Kent Trine. Any last discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so five to two. And?
I'm, all right, Mayor, I tried to get your attention for the queue, I just, again, wanted to reiterate that I think doing things at midnight is not transparent.
No.
Well, if you guys wouldn't have taken 45 minutes to go through one fucking.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second.
All right.
Till next week, y'all.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.